It's black and white.
Okay, just need a script up, okay? Need a script up here.
Can you have yours since this is together? It's just in black and white because I just changed it.
Thank you. So I had a few upgrades on there. So the regular Annapolis City Council meeting on Monday, September 8th, 2025 will be called to order at 7:02. At this time, please join us for the invocation given by Alderman, Alderman Pindell Charles, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to everyone. Can we all bow our heads, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we come again before you with humbled hearts. Lord, we come to seek peace, grace, and mercy. We come before you, Lord, to provide us with some of the answers to the questions that perplex us. We come before you knowing that the world in many parts is in turmoil. People are struggling. People are trying to find peace, joy, and love. But we can find it in our own spheres. We can spread it in our own spheres. We have those who are here to do that for us. And we know that the decisions that we make, we hope that they will be guided by your strength and by your love. We want you to be in this place this evening and wherever we may go, in Jesus' name, amen.
A pledge of allegiance, the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic of Canada, with which we stand, with which we worship, with which we serve, with which we believe. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir, Mayor Buckley.
Yep.
Alderman Huntley.
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neill.
Present.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles.
Present.
Alderwoman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Shannon Meyer.
Present.
Alderman Gay. Alderman Savage.
Present.
Alderman Arnett.
Present.
You, Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add CA 2-25 and O 13-25.
Don't move a second.
Thank you. And for chapter amendment CA 25, this allows us to rectify a timing oversight in what has been an extremely busy legislative period over the past few months. It will ensure we recognize the intention of the council as reflected in the budget and the hard work of the residents, volunteers, of the Salary Review Commission by bringing their recommendations to final council vote prior to the election. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is ceremonial items, beginning with ID 12925, Citation Boatyard Bar and Grill.
All right, is the mayor of Eastport here, Dick Frania? Excellent. And Scott, the man behind the mayor of Eastport, how you doing? Good.
This is a new restaurant. Most people don't know much about the Boatyard, but this is a citation from the city of Annapolis. On behalf of the residents of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you the city council citation in recognition of your outstanding cooperation and support of city staff in addressing critical infrastructure needs. In July of 2025, during emergency repairs to remove collapsed abandoned fuel tanks in front of your establishment at 401 Fourth Street in Eastport, your team, including owner, general managers, and even the head chef, demonstrated exceptional community spirit. You maintained open communications with our Department of Public Works inspector and adapted restaurant operations to accommodate the work, including rerouting customers and providing cold drinks, non-alcoholic, to the crew working in extreme heat. Your support and hospitality showcased the civic partnership that strengthens the city of Annapolis. We are grateful for your contributions and proud to recognize the Boatyard Bar and Grill as a valued neighbor and partner in public service. Congratulations. Good. Thank you very much. And Head Chef Scott, GM Kevin, he's been with me for 21 years. And since Kevin was really the one on the job, Kevin, why don't you talk about it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the city council. We would just like to extend a special thank you to Inspector Remy Sunville, who worked with us hand in hand, constant communication about the issues on the street, and they were so easy to work with. And that's why it's easy to extend our hospitality from the restaurant to them due to their professionalism. Thank you.
And all of our interaction with city employees for a long time now have been superb. So thank you for having really great people.
Well, we want to thank you, Dick. You truly give back to the community. You know, we are going to be erecting those 30-foot-high statues on either side of the Eastport Bridge so that when people come across that bridge, they know who truly is the mayor of Eastport. They're going to be gold. They're going to be beautiful, so. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is ceremonial item, city council citation, ID 13525, Chicken Ruth's Deli 60th Anniversary.
Right, Spencer, thank you. Another great restaurant.
You can only come down if you have a sandwich named after you.
I'm not sure if any of you have eaten at this place called Chicken Ruth's. Have you heard of it? I'm going to hand this over to who would like to read, Karma or Harry?
All right. On behalf of the residents of the city of Annapolis, we present the city council citation in celebration of your 60th year in business. Thank you. I can actually read it. Congratulations. Since opening the doors in 1965, Chicken Ruth's Deli has become a beloved Main Street landmark and a symbol of Annapolis' hospitality. Founded by Chicken Ruth Lovett and carried on by their family until 2017, when Keith Jones and now his son Spencer took over, the deli has welcomed generations of residents, midshipmen, visitors, and leaders from across Maryland and beyond. With its famous colossal challenges, creative sandwiches, and iconic crab cakes, Chicken Ruth's has made its mark. Its walls and menus tell the story of Maryland's capital city, where politics, community, and tradition meet over a shared meal. For six decades, Chicken Ruth's has nourished our city with food, fellowship, and great memories. We thank you for your dedication and wish you many more years of success. Thank you so much.
So I just want to thank, thank really the whole Annapolis community because with the restaurant, you can't stay open for 60 years if you don't have loyal customers. So thank you all for showing up for us year after year. Sorry, my voice is a little raspy. Virginia Tech football game this weekend. So thank you all for showing up. I want to thank our staff. They work so hard every day to provide great food and great service. And then I want to thank the past owners of Chicken Ruth's. I am standing in really big shoes here. Chick and Ruth, obviously, their son Ted for many years, my dad. So yeah, thank you to the community, our staff, past owners. Let's do another 60.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is ID 13225, city council member recognition.
So we have something very special tonight. We'd like to honor two of our amazing counselors, who've been great colleagues to all of us, especially me, in the last eight years. I want to thank you. We have a prom set up here, so we're going to invite the family forward. Who brought these chairs? Who brought these chairs? I think this was someone's idea, so I'm ready to run with it. Please come forward, family and friends, who would... Okay, Regina, what's the runner show?
Can the family members of Mr. Ross Arnett and Alderwoman Sheila Finlayson please come to the front? And then Aldermans Arnett and Alderwoman Finlayson, will you please join your family at the front?
Yeah. I'll try and run it from over there.
Excuse me. Excuse me, everybody. I said family members, so members of the city council, please join your family in the middle of the floors for a photo. Everybody. Come on. Everybody.
Looks good.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to present from here and I'll jump in for a picture. As all of you know, politics is really easy. People love you. It's really hard to make mistakes in what we do. But I can tell you, for 18 years, Sheila and Ross have saccharized for this city and made this city a much better place. So we want to recognize their service because they're both retiring this year. If you'll humor me, Mitchell did a little bit of background stuff, so I'm going to read some stuff about you all, just so everybody knows about your illustrious career and the way you volunteered yourselves for this city to make it a better place. Sheila, we thank you for 18 years of service to the people of Annapolis as a ward for Alderwoman of Annapolis on the Annapolis City Council. Born and raised in Annapolis, you earned a bachelor's from Morgan State University. Go Bears! And later, a master's from the University of Wisconsin in Milwaukee. After 35-year career as an educator, where you became the first African-American woman to lead the Teachers Association for the county, you continued to serve, you continued to serve the National Council of Urban Education Associations. In 2007, you were elected to this body, where you served on rules and finance and worked closely with Education Commission, police, fire, and the Office of Emergency Management. You sponsored the funding for the summer jobs program, led Fighting the Name for Airways T. Allen Boulevard, served on the Bates Development Committee, which is now Bates Senior Center, Bates Senior Living, and the Boys and Girls Club. And spearheaded the sale of the Eisenhower Golf Course, which brought us a beautiful new municipal pool. You've been more than three-decade member of the Annapolis Chapter of Links Incorporated and served in many leadership positions, including vice president and president and secretary. A member of Mount Zion United Methodist Church, we know you will continue to serve our community. We can't thank you for all the ways which you've advocated for city staff, city programs, and residents of our community. Thank you, Alderwoman Finlayson, for your remarkable contribution and years of tireless service. I'll lose some weight. All right, the Honorable Ross Arnett. Ross, we thank you for your 18 years of service, including successful council actions on public safety, environment, zoning, and most importantly, city finances. After graduating from the University of Maryland, Ross began what would become a 32-year career with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services as a nationally recognized expert in private health insurance and healthcare use, eventually managing a research center with a professional staff of 65 and an annual budget of more than $50 million. You initially came to Annapolis seeking repairs for your sailboat at Forsetts. Then, like a lot of us, you fell in love with our historic Chesapeake Bay town, visiting often, and eventually moving here permanently with your wife for more than two decades ago. After getting involved in the community and serving on the board and as president of the Eastport Civic Association, you began your service to the residents as Alderman in 2007. Now, Ross, you participated in many, in any number of secessions with Annapolis. Sorry, I'm going to go, this is a little bust on you here, Ross. Secessions from Annapolis. As a flag-waving member of the Maritime Republic, I think tonight, we're going to have to forgive you, that, give you this order and this plaque. I'm sure a few times a year, just before the tug-of-war and the sock-burning events, you'll have to take this plaque down from your wall so that nobody knows your allegiance and the MRE don't find out and fire you. We won't hold it against you, Ross, because you're one of us. So thank you for your service to the residents. We wish you the best of luck in your retirement. From bottom of all of our hearts, we thank you. Thank you, Ross. Are complaining? Okay, it's still the Sheila and Ross Show, and I'd love, if you could say a few words, Sheila, followed by Alderman Arnett.
Thank you. First of all, many of my Link sisters have stepped out of the room, but this was a wonderful surprise. We had a meeting on Saturday, and they, 50 ladies, kept the secret. So I was totally shocked when I walked in this morning. But you know, I do what I do because I love it, but because I also have such a good foundation of support. My family, my Link sisters, my colleagues. So no one does this alone, but with a good foundation of support, we can do anything. So I just want to say thank you to my colleagues on the council for our collaborative work over the many years. And I want to thank my family and my community for stepping up and supporting me to allow me to do what I do. So I have to stop here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Love you guys.
Ross?
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Alderwoman Finlayson for being such a good colleague. We joined virtually at the same time. Ladies first, Sheila was sworn in, then me, so she's had seniority. But in terms of being on the council, I, this may sound braggadocious, but it kind of came naturally. It just seemed like a logical sequence, as was Sheila and all of her leadership roles in the private sector. And I won't say it was always easy, and sometimes it was kind of hard to take direct criticisms, but I have thoroughly enjoyed it. I'm sure I'm going to miss it. I just got back from two weeks in Portugal and realized I can quickly divorce myself from the city, but I'll be working until the last day, and then I'll still be around. You can't get rid of me. So thank you for supporting me. Thank you all the colleagues on the council. I think we coalesce and make a very good...
and parks teams for their efforts in working to get community input on the design and functionality of this space and sourcing grants to fund this nearly half a million-dollar project. The location of the park is a prime example of a beautiful waterfront site where access has been limited, or in this case, almost completely cut off for use. The new design gives our Clay Street, Homewood, and Western Annapolis neighbors, along with residents of Morris Blum and students of J. Albert Adams Academy, a place to reflect, do a little fishing, or crabbing, or even grab a sandwich while watching the birds do all the fishing. The new park is named in honor of Robert Eads, and we are thrilled that Tavon and London Eads were able to celebrate the groundbreaking with us. I thank them for their remarks at the event, reminding us all of the outsized influence their dad had on this community before his untimely passing during COVID. We hope you'll all join us for the ribbon-cutting in April. At the end of August, U.S. Naval Academy Minjibin marched up Main Street, marking the return of Navy football. The season got started the best way with a big win over VMI, 52 to 7. Last weekend, they took on the University of Alabama at Birmingham and were again, and again won, 38 to 24. I got to spend the opening game in the company of new Superintendent Lieutenant General Borger Schultz, a Marine who knows Annapolis well since he himself graduated from the academy in 1991. On behalf of the council, I'd like to extend a warm welcome to Annapolis, to him and his family. Last week, we were pleased to host the U.S. Conference of Mayors P3 Institute, that's Private-Public Partnerships, which ran a workshop for municipal leaders here at City Hall. The public-private partnership that has helped us fund the work at City Dock through the rebuilding of Hillman Garage is of great interest to local governments around the state and across the country. Annapolis is leading the way in resilience innovation, and we're excited to support others facing their own infrastructure challenges. I want to give a special shout-out to Planning and Zoning Director Chris Jakubiec and Department of Public Works Director Berv Vogel for their work and their team's work. The work is being recognized by our residents and businesses. First, Director Jakubiec got two recent letters. The first came from Palat Pleasers, the second from a city resident who is building their forever home. Both had high praise for our permitting staff led by John Manasa. I should note here that Director Jakubiec has instituted significant changes to permitting with a goal of streamlining the process, and it seems that that effort is paying off. Thank you, Chris. The other thing goes out to DPPW team for their work on taming weeds on sidewalks areas around downtown. Alongside our beautiful baskets that line Main Street, we are working to keep our city looking beautiful, thanks to Director Vogel and his team. We have not only, we've had, not only had zero complaints this year about weeds, which is a first, especially around election time. We've even received kudos for a job well done. So, thanks to all involved in keeping our city looking beautiful. In case you missed, amongst all the debates and yard signs and the canvassing, this year is a municipal election year, and we want to remind eligible voters that next Tuesday, September 16th, is Primary Election Day in Annapolis. All Democrats have the opportunity to turn out and vote because there is a citywide Democrat primary, mayoral primary, and there are contested aldermanic races for four of the eight city council seats. Please note that Republicans and independent voters do not need to turn out for the primary because there is no inter-party primary contest. All of those candidates have automatically won their races and will advance to the general election on November 4th. Lastly, a reminder on a few things that are coming up. Our Community Resource Fair will continue until early October. This Thursday, it's at Morris Blum Senior Living, beginning at 3:00 p.m. Also, on Thursday, the Singer-Songwriter Festival begins with live music, some free, some paid, at venues around Annapolis. That event goes through Sunday and is now in its fourth, very successful year. On Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., come out for the Drug-Free All-Stars Event at Pittmore Recreation Center, featuring face painters, DJs, food, moon bounce, games, and fun for the whole family. And also, in our wonderful Western Annapolis, the Western Annapolis Oktoberfest, a great tradition on Annapolis Street, will take place starting at 11:00 a.m. on Sunday, September 28th. So, we'll see you at the next meeting later this month. Now, let's get on with tonight's meeting. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item.
Yes, sir. The next item is reports by committees.
Alderman Huntley.
Thank you very much. The Finance Committee last met on September 3rd. We had a bunch of supplemental appropriations, some of which are very exciting, and we'll see later in the agenda. We did not take any action on the legislation 01225 regarding the Spending Affordability Commission. Alderman Arnett has decided there's a better non-ordinance way to do this, and I agree with him. And then, we did favorably recommend the 03125 issuance of general obligation bonds and bond anticipation votes. And Director Moran had a great report for us about all the progress in the Finance Department. That's all I got. Thank you.
Ruine O'Neil.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee is meeting tomorrow, 4:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers, with reports from parking contractors about some data that we've been asking for, and not on the Transportation Committee. I think we forgot to announce the Kunta Kinte Festival that is also taking place on Saturday at, in Ward 2, the best ward of all, at the stadium. At the stadium, all day long, bands, children's activities by the Children's Museum, and lots of great vendors.
Thank you. Sorry, that was left off the schedule. I apologize. Thank you. Please come out for the Kunta Kinte Festival. This year, it will be at the Naval Academy grounds, and it'll be bigger and better than ever. Thank you. Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For Environmental Matters, well, I can't really remember what we did in July. It's so long ago. But, it was, actually, I think it was the Spa Road property. But, in any case, for the next meeting, that will be September 11th, for this Thursday, 3:00 p.m. We're gonna be talking about implementation of the Annapolis Ahead Comprehensive Plan 014. We're gonna be talking about Harbor Line legislation, which I think might be getting withdrawn, and then the two boat show leases, and I think we're also gonna be getting into some of the update on the, how the leaf blower prohibition's going, and talk about enforcement and implementation of incentive program for that. So, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Gueye.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. The Housing Human Welfare Committee will meet, is it September the 10th, virtually? Wednesday, September the 10th, virtually at 6:30 p.m. We'll discuss a number of things, including everything that's coming from the Planning Commission, 01425, and 02925 in particular, which are on public here.
Thank you. Alderman Finlayson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rules and City Government Committee meeting, or Committee, met this morning. We discussed 01425, implementation of the Annapolis Ahead Comprehensive Plan 2040. After much discussion, we decided that we needed some additional information, and more importantly, we needed to give the staff an opportunity to work with the aldermen to work out some issues. So, we postponed action on that piece of legislation. We also discussed 017, which was short-term rentals per block base. We gave it a favorable recommendation with one amendment, and the last is 024, election report deadlines. After much discussion and after hearing from the chairperson of the Board of Elections, we voted to give that legislation an unfavorable recommendation. So, our next meeting will be Friday, October 3rd, 1:00 here in Council Chambers. And I might add to the Kunta Kinte, it is the 35th anniversary of the Kunta Kinte Celebration in Annapolis. So, it is a big event this weekend at the stadium, beginning at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Alderman Chandler-Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Economic Matters will be meeting on Wednesday, September 17th, at 6:30 p.m. here in Council Chambers. We were supposed to be hearing 01225, the Portable Spending, although that is no longer relevant, it seems. We will also be hearing the boat show leases and the market house leases.
Alderman Pendell-Chiles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rules and City Government Committee meeting, or Committee, met this morning. We discussed 01425, implementation of the Annapolis Ahead Comprehensive Plan 2040. After much discussion, we decided that we needed some additional information, and more importantly, we needed to give the staff an opportunity to work with the aldermen to work out some issues. So, we postponed action on that piece of legislation. We also discussed 017, which was short-term rentals per block base. We gave it a favorable recommendation with one amendment, and the last is 024, election report deadlines. After much discussion and after hearing from the chairperson of the Board of Elections, we voted to give that legislation an unfavorable recommendation. So, our next meeting will be Friday, October 3rd, 1:00 here in Council Chambers. And I might add to the Kunta Kinte, it is the 35th anniversary of the Kunta Kinte Celebration in Annapolis. So, it is a big event this weekend at the stadium, beginning at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Alderman Chandler-Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Economic Matters will be meeting on Wednesday, September 17th, at 6:30 p.m. here in Council Chambers. We were supposed to be hearing 01225, the Portable Spending, although that is no longer relevant, it seems. We will also be hearing the boat show leases and the market house leases.
Alderman Pendell-Chiles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The September meeting for the Public Safety Standing Committee was scheduled for Monday, September 1st, which was Labor Day. That was canceled, and we do not have, we did not have any legislation pending for this month. So, the next meeting will be on October the 6th, here in Council Chambers.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
During comments by the general public, you may not speak on scheduled public hearings. We have a lot of public hearings that are scheduled, and they are, and you will come up separately for those. Tyler Avenue, 0925, Tyler Avenue Complete Community Overlay District, that's a separate one. Business revitalization, district regulation change, lease of city property for the full boat show, lease of city property for the market house, rank choice voting, and lease of city property for the spring boat shows. These will all have their own separate public hearing, which will be later. But, for anything else, please come forward. Katie McDermott, are you a general? You're signed up first here.
Katie McDermott, 50 Franklin Street, Annapolis, Maryland. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I wanted to bring up the STR, ADU, and Duplex Bills that are pending. I submitted a request last week to ask you to consider withdrawing these bills and engage with the public on all three of these bills, which affect neighborhoods. And I think this would be a tremendous opportunity for you to consider that, because the notice on the ADU and the Duplex Bills, which I left in my folder back there, were in the Capital Gazette. They were for September 15th, and I guess that's been now moved to September 29th. But, I can tell you, folks don't really understand what's going on. And when you're making seismic zoning change that have big impacts on neighborhoods, whatever the merits of the bill may be, and I have a lot of concerns about them, there hasn't been the type of town hall public engagement that you really should undertake. So, normal routine processing of these bills is exceedingly unwise and frankly disrespectful to the neighborhoods of this city. So, I would encourage you to really seriously consider that request, withdraw these bills. There's no, it would be impressive if you did so, and schedule three, four town halls over the next three, four months, and get this right. We are in an election year, obviously. The City Council is having a huge turnover, and it would be wise, and in the public interest, to slow down, engage the public, and really get this right. Thank you very much.
Next up, Heidi Rothenhouse.
My name is Heidi Rothenhouse. I live at 198 Acton Road in the Truxton Heights neighborhood. I'm here to oppose adoption of the Equitable Public Water Access Resolution, as now written. So, that's R4025. This enormous plan contains over 120 projects. When initially conceived in 2023, the context for city spending and availability of state and federal grants was very different than the outlook today. We need to carefully prioritize spending to address the safety and quality of life for the largest number of residents, especially those in underserved communities within our city. While the where-ases of the resolution are solid, who can disagree with improving access to our waterways? The plan itself is not ready for approval. Two examples of where it is lacking. There's no connection to the water access points in Quiet Waters Park. Surely, for the underserved residents near Forest Drive, in communities like Robinwood, Woodside Gardens, and others, Quiet Waters Park and its lovely nature paths and paddle center are a short distance away. Can our transportation department develop a way to help residents access those resources? Secondly, the evaluation of existing conditions as reported in the plan are incomplete, and problems have been glossed over. I am most familiar with the headwaters of Spa Creek, since that's where I've lived for 28 years. But, I see obvious holes, and if I see them, residents of other neighborhoods would no doubt have insight to consider. Specifically, where the water access plan proposes paddlers' access, water at the Children's Museum and at the footbridge from Syllapanne to Truxton Park, the water quality and water depth prevent safe use about half the days, as measured by the Spa Creek Conservancy. Half the days. The Health Department guidelines for fecal coliform, essentially poop in the water, were over the max level of 104, more than half the weeks measured this year. Some weeks, the level was more than 100 times the safe level. And keep in mind, the Children's Museum underwent a $3 million waterway improvement project several years ago. And keep in mind that at the footbridge, the city's electrical expert tasked with evaluating the stray current problem at the Truxton Boat Ramp last July 18th declared that that site was okay, but found straight current at the water, at the footbridge. To put disadvantaged residents into dirty, unsafe water in the name of equity is not responsible or kind. These problems are challenges that are unlikely to be fixable in the near term, yet the water access plan categorizes those project areas as short-term, and staff have already applied to DNR for a permit to install a dock for paddlers. So, because of these types of weaknesses in the plan, plus the lack of real prioritization of spending on water accesses versus so many other needs for maintenance in city parks, such as the playing fields by Bates, the Truxton Park footpaths, and especially in light of financial stresses related to the City Dock project, I respectfully ask that you not adopt the Equitable Public Water Access Plan. Thank you.
Anybody else likely to come forward and speak in the general public hearing?
Good evening, colleagues. I just want to say a few words in honor of Alderman Arnett, Alderwoman Finlayson, on your upcoming retirement. I was listening to your earlier celebration, and just wanted to be here in person to thank you for your service for many years. Appreciate your guidance and mentorship when we serve together. Appreciate the many things you've done before and since in your communities, and just want to thank you and congratulate you on your upcoming retirement.
Got to purchase dresses soon. Hi, my name is George Gallagher, 1212 Barbud Lane. The question I'm asking tonight is how far is this current City Council majority and Planning Commission willing to go with top-down, heavy-handed Plan 2440 central planning agenda? Well, you need to look no further than what happened with ordinance 0624. Well, you need to look no further than what happened with ordinance oh six twenty four. As a reminder, on Monday, December ninth, two thousand twenty four, Alderwoman Sheila Finlayson, Rhonda Pindell Charles, and Carmel O'Neill voted no on ordinance oh six four twenty four. The radical anti-accessibility, anti-seniors, anti-business banning of drive-throughs. During the City Council meeting, Alderman Finlayson stated, "This legislation smacks of discrimination against seniors, folks with disabilities, and against parents with children." I wholeheartedly agree. Despite months of testimony from seniors and businesses voicing opposition to this ban on drive-throughs for pharmacies, banks, restaurants, Mayor Buckley, Alderman Arnett, Savage, Huntley, Gay, and Channel Meyer voted in support of this discriminatory legislation. Anyone who's running for City Council in this, this election period to replace this current City Council should commit to introducing legislation to repeal ordinance zero six twenty four on day one and take a hard look at all the objectives of Annapolis Plan twenty four. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward and speak?
Good evening, Councilman, Mayor. My name is Carl Larkin. I live at one five four Prince George Street. I just wanted to ask if you've clearly read the leases that are being considered for by this council. Because four, four of the ordinances and the like have such a
We'll be speaking, we'll be, we'll be speaking to those later. We'll be speaking to the leases later. If you're here to speak on the leases, please sit down. We have a separate public hearing for the leases. If you're here to speak about the leases, please sit down. Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward? We have a separate time for each lease, and please come forward and speak at the right time. We want to hear from you. Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward about anything else other than the things that have their own special public hearing? Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is consent calendar.
Did I get a motion on the ascent? Consent calendar? Thank you. My name is City Clerk. Please call the roll.
Yes, Sir, Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderwoman O'Neill.
Aye.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderwoman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Channel Meyer.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Hunt.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item is business and miscellaneous, beginning with supplemental appropriations fifty thousand dollars and above. S A four twenty six, Capital Department of Transportation, Capital Reserve.
Could I get a motion on S A four twenty six?
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Next item under supplemental appropriations fifty thousand and above is S A five twenty six, Grant. Fire, D S C I, Maryland Department of Service, and Civic Innovation.
Did I get a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Alderman Neil?
I just wanted to say something about it.
Okay, yeah.
For those that don't know, this is a really great grant because it grants funding for an internship for firefighters that I know that Peter Malley has been working really hard on for the past six months along with his staff. So very excited about this essay.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is public hearings, beginning with ordinance oh twenty nine twenty five, Tyler Avenue Complete Community Overlay District.
Okay, the first public hearing for the number of public hearings we have tonight is on oh nine, oh twenty nine twenty five Tyler Avenue. We have one, two, three, four people signed up to speak. Nope, eight people signed up to speak. So this is a hard one. Nikos, please come forward.
I'm Nikos Fondoros. I live on twenty Winryd Drive, Annapolis.
Thank you.
And I am in favor of the ordinance because it promotes a more livable, safer, sustainable, and equitable community along the Tyler Avenue corridor. And what's good for Tyler Avenue is good for Annapolis as a whole. Rising tide raises all ships. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yanis is up next.
Hello, my name is Yanis Kakkiani, twelve thirty seven Tyler Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland. Obviously. I'm in support of this. I think this is great for the city of Annapolis, great for the residents. This is going to give an opportunity for people that are less fortunate to be able to afford housing in Annapolis. Obviously, we all know that housing is very expensive in Annapolis, and I think this is a win-win for everybody. And we've gone to all the hearings, and we've had a lot of positive, a lot of negative. But I think at the end of the day, at the last meeting we attended was for the Planning and Zoning Commission that supported this for many reasons. And Eric, for, that works for the city for the planning and zoning, has been very transparent about everything and has done a wonderful job. And I just want to say thank you for all this hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up, Jennifer Willhite, please come forward.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Willhite. I live at eleven ninety five Tyler Avenue. And I just wanted to come here to support the Tyler Avenue project. I was attendance, in attendance of a couple of the meetings that they had. And I think what Eric presented was very well thought out, and it was something that is good for Tyler Avenue. If anyone that owns property on Tyler Avenue has the option to participate and perhaps build a multifamily dwelling on their property or sell their property and maybe allow someone else the opportunity to do so. So it's not something that's forced upon the residents. If they want to participate, I think they can for the betterment of their family. But I just wanted to show my support for all the hard work and preparation. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about this. I can't read this writing. Pelts, Peltnick Christine. Thank you. Did I need to bring my Greek dictionary or anything like that?
Christos Pelikanos, twelve thirty eight Tyler Avenue, here to support the Tyler Avenue initiative. Want to thank Eric and his team. They've dealt with a lot of community pushback, approval. They've gotten beat up at some of these meetings, and he's been very transparent. At the end of the day, this is just an overlay, and I think it'll be great for the community and it'll be great for Annapolis. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Next up, Nan Wells.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Nan Wells. I live at twenty seven Johnson Place in Annapolis, two one four oh one. And I am here to, tonight to support the Tyler Avenue Complete Community Overlay. I called Annapolis my home beginning in nineteen eighty three. And I love Annapolis. It is a city that values history, but we must also value fairness and opportunity. Too often, working families and young people, especially our children and grandchildren, cannot afford to live here. This breaks up families and weakens the social fabric that makes Annapolis so special. The Tyler Avenue Plan creates a more complete community. It brings thoughtful development with green space, mixed housing types, and opportunities for small businesses. It is designed not just for one group, but for all Anapolitans, teachers, nurses, service workers, seniors, and young professionals. I see this as a way to open doors. The Tyler Overlay is about equity, inclusion, and ensuring that Annapolis doesn't become a place for only the wealthy. It's about creating choices so families can stay together across generations. Please support this vision for a stronger, fairer Annapolis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Peggy Meyer.
Good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity. I first came to Annapolis in nineteen seventy two. I've come to St. John's, and I've never left.
Will you just, full name and address? Thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That's right.
Thank you.
Peggy Meyer. I live at three Syllapanne Road.
All right.
And that's two one four oh three.
Thank you.
So when I, when I came, I was in college and honestly really never left. Certainly never left Maryland. I've gone, you know, various places in the county. But this is my home. My children were born here. And I am so fortunate that my children are also still in Anorond County. All my grandchildren are within thirty minutes of where I live. I am not affected by the Tyler Plan. But I see it as a really excellent framework and model that we should emulate whenever we have the opportunity. Someone earlier mentioned A D U regulations that are on the table, and I'm afraid I don't know anything about them. But these are all initiatives that honestly make it possible for me to stay in my home after I retire. And I, I, I want to do that. I don't, I don't want to move to another heaven knows what community. I had, I lived in Baltimore once because it's the only thing I could afford to do at that point in my life. And I'm so grateful that I'm back in Annapolis now. I want to stay here, and so I really do encourage your support for this Tyler initiative. And then anything else that our really excellent urban planning people come up with. They've, they've done a beautiful job on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom Pesturich.
Thank you, City Council members and Mr. Mayor, for this opportunity to speak with you. Most of the people that have come up and spoke to you.
Tom, just give us an address, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Just your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. My address is eleven ninety eight Tyler Avenue.
Thank you so much.
It's a four unit apartment building there.
Thank you.
I've owned that building for about ten years. Two of my kids have lived in there with, you know, young children. And the, it's ridiculous what the speeds that go up and down the thing. And the development plan is going to slow down the traffic down there and make things better. I can't see why anybody's against this, this plan. I think the planning and zoning has done a great job, and I think everybody in this, in this thing should get paid more money. What do you think about that?
It's the next, it's the next mayor's problem.
Listen, that's all I got to say. Mostly everybody has got it, and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, one of my favorite people, Larry Tom.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Larry Tom. My wife and I have resided at eleven sixteen Tyler Avenue since June of eighty six. So we are long-term residents of this community. If I may also add that until my retirement in two thousand seventeen, I served for over a decade as the Planning and Zoning Director for Anorond County. So I speak to you tonight not only as a long-term resident of the community, but also I want to share my views as a professional planner who's had a long career of over forty years. I'm here to speak in support of this overlay district. And I think, from my point of view, this is a very stable neighborhood. But it's not, I don't think it has reached its full potential as a community. And a lot of this has to do with the fact that Tyler Avenue, being a very broad corridor and serving as a collector's street, has essentially subdivided us into two segments, each being on one side of the street or the other. I think that there are some underutilized and unused properties that could be redeveloped or developed to provide some additional housing and to increase the property values of the community. And thirdly, part of what's happening too is because of the nature of the community, there is no real central or identifiable amenity or amenity that can pull us together as a neighborhood. So with the overlay district, we have the potential of seeing those concerns be addressed in very positive ways without negatively impacting the overall nature of the community. The overlay district maintains the underlying zoning district that's there in existence. So we're not looking at any kind of upzoning or increase in density in what is already allowed under its current zoning. But it does provide some opportunities and some creative approaches to address those three issues that I identified. And that's why I'm in support of the bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward and speak on oh twenty nine twenty five?
George Gallagher, twelve twelve Barbud Lane. So we had three public meetings on this overlay project. On this, the last two meetings, the opposition was not only sizable, but it was very loud and vigorous. So one of the things is that a lot of the residents that own single-family homes with backyards know what this really means. This is phase one of getting rid of single-family homes with backyards in the city of Annapolis. The Ward Six and this Tyler Avenue Overlay Project is the canary in the coalmine. Because this is the agenda for Plan twenty forty, to turn this city, infill it with high-density units. They want to knock down the single-family homes, get rid of the backyards, and put in two-story, four, two-story units per site. And they won't be affordable. These will be very expensive. So what they're doing is they're going to eliminate single-family homes and backyards, force the elderly on fixed incomes and working class off their property and out of Annapolis. This zoning change will open up Tyler Avenue to predatory development. The claim of affordable housing is, it is nonsense. What will actually happen is high-density, high-cost housing, nothing more than Plan twenty forty, smart city, fifteen-minute city program coming from City Hall. Our city budget has blown up to two hundred and four point eight million dollars. And you guys just need more tax money, and this will give you more tax money. Ward Six is just the least represented, most vulnerable ward, and the zoning department and the City Council has decided to pick off this area. It'd be the easiest one. But what you're going to do, and what you want to do, is get rid of single-family homes with backyards. That's what That's what the agenda of Plan 2040 is. And there's more. I mean, the elimination of the drive-throughs is part of Plan 2040. This is just the beginning. It's not what it appears to be, everybody. It isn't what it appears to be. Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to come forward and speak on O-2925? Please come forward. State your full name and address.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Solano. I live at 1204 Tyler Avenue. This overlay really is gentrification. And we have seen this across the country. And the people who are hurt the most are the longtime homeowners as they will end up losing their home because developers will pressure them to do so. Additionally, the false claim of affordable housing, the math doesn't work out. In order to put up a fourplex, you have to buy additional lots. You can't do it on existing lots. So therefore, you have to knock down what is there and then come to code on each of the four units. Now, we recently had a house built after a devastating event for a very small 1,500-square-foot house with all the codes that we had to come up with, which is store management, sprinkler systems for the inside for a one-story ranch, was close to $500,000. Now, what's wrong with that? Well, the current value and the average cost of homes on Tyler Avenue are affordable. The average cost is $400,000. The average cost for homes in Annapolis is in excess of $600,000. So if you have to put in, just call it a fourplex, and I'm glad you're not going with apartments and things higher than 2 1/2 feet. However, you will not get affordable housing for teachers, for firemen, for police people, because once again, the house has to be sold for a profit. And that's going to be about $600,000 to $700,000. And the proof is off of Forest Drive, where all those new townhouses were built. You had the opportunity then to provide for affordable housing. Well, starting points at $700,000 with no land is not affordable. People on Tyler Avenue, as mentioned, many of them have what are called deep lots. And we heard on many occasions how deep lots seem to be problematic. Well, deep lots, called yards, are affordable currently. It provides green space to the families that live there. Now, I have no objection to people wanting to put additional properties onto their existing homes or to buy adjoining properties. That's fine. But I think this project really is what gentrification looks like. And its goal of meeting affordable housing is nowhere close to the mark. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward on O-2925? Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. I want to thank Eric Lashinsky for taking a lot of arrows just to get this out in the public. There's a long way to go on this, but thank you for all your hard work.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Gay.
Thank you. Obviously, I'm just echoing what you say with Mr. Lashinsky's work, incredibly hard on this with his staff. I'd also like to add on that the street repairs for the greenery and the traffic calming, it was supposed to be done while we were in recess over the August break. And there were issues with the procurement. And so that will be taking place as well. The street calming will get done before any of the major development. And I just thought that was some of the more pertinent feedback that we heard. People wanted the streets to calm. And so that will be done. And again, thank you very much, Eric, for working on this incredible piece of legislation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Actually, I need to close that. I need to accept into the record the findings of O-2925 as well. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Next item.
Sure. The next item for a public hearing is O-3025, Business Revitalization District Regulation Change.
Okay, we have this one person signed up to speak on that. Please come forward, Tara Stout.
Hi, Tara Stout, 1174 Bay Highlands Drive. I'm here to vocalize support for O-3025, which basically modifies the FAR and the BR zone. But I'd like to reiterate what Planning Commission stated in its findings, and this is a direct quote: "This legislation does not substantially change the economic incentives for redevelopment and is thus not likely to have a meaningful impact on revitalization of the zone." End of quote. Yet despite those findings, Planning Commission voted to recommend this legislation be approved as-is with a 5-0 vote. It's baffling to me that we're spending time on legislation acknowledging it has, it's not going to meet its intended goal, but we're just going to approve it as-is anyway. I attended that Planning Commission meeting and actually was very impressed with Planning Commission. They were quite engaged and asked a lot of questions, which made me even more baffled by the written findings. But I requested that O-3025 be amended to provide the same leeway for height for rooftop accessory structures similar to the MX zone. It quite candidly defies logic to me that an area specifically zoned for revitalization gets zero feet of leeway for rooftop accessory structures at the same time we're discussing that an area zoned for conservation and historic district gets recommended for 14 feet for the same purpose. Please understand, I am not offering an opinion on whether the dock street should get its 14 feet. I'm just pointing out the facts and what appears to be a disparity of treatment between two different areas in the city. This request for height was made after consultation with several architects, most notably Dan Douglas, a local architect who designed 161 West Street, a project I'm sure the mayor is quite familiar with. Dan evaluated this potential redevelopment as a three-story structure and shared that it was a real challenge to get 161 West Street to work within the height restrictions. And that building is in the MX zone, so had the extra 12 feet for rooftop accessory structures. I am not a designer. It's not my forte. But I think the basic rationale for the height is that today's design standards call for higher interior ceiling heights than may have been the norm in 1985 when this BR zone was created. Clearly, it didn't work. It's been 40 years, and nothing has happened in that part of the city. So Planning Commission and Department of Planning Zoning both suggest evaluating a potential rezoning of the BR zone to MX, which would automatically provide the extra 12 feet. So I'm asking that we simply not stall the process further and that we amend O-3025 so that there is a potential of getting to an economically viable redevelopment of property in the Clay Street and Washington Street area. Again, why pass legislation that even Planning Commission and everybody acknowledges is not going to meet its stated goal? I'm happy to attend any of the committees that are reviewing this to go over it in, you know, excessive detail. But I'd like to ask that the council, I'm told that the only people who can amend this ordinance at this point is that the council has to recommend this incremental height. And I want to thank Alderman or Neo for being very engaged in this process and, you know, ensuring that we could even get this amendment on the council agenda for this session. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tara. Anybody else like to come forward and speak on O-3025? Okay, I declare the public hearing closed on O-3025. Let's accept into the record the Business Revitalization District Regulations. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Please add me as a co-sponsor.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda for a public hearing is Ordinance O-3235, Lease of City Property, 2031 to 2036, All Boat Shows.
Okay, Carl Larkin, I'm not sure if you're signed up, but because you came up to the microphone first, please go first when we're talking about these leases. This is a lease for the boat show.
Yes, my name is Carl Larkin. I live at 154 Prince George Street. And I was just referring to the drafting of the lease that's being offered here, that it's carefully, if you read it carefully, it allows all of the extensions for at least 14 years for the boat shows. And because it allows that the lease can be extended anytime before a specific date. So it could be extended, it could be signed tomorrow, extended the next day to 14 years. And it's similarly on the Market House. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. Okay, the first person signed up to speak on this is John Stefanic.
Good evening. My name's John Stefanic. I serve as the Executive Director of the Marine Trades Association of Maryland. We're located at 7076 Bembi Beach Road in Annapolis. I'd like to underscore the importance of extending the Annapolis Boat Shows leases at City Dock through 2036. Annapolis Sail Boat Shows are the largest sailing events in the Western Hemisphere, drawing residents, visitors, exhibitors, media from across the globe. It's a signature event that cements Annapolis as the sailing capital of America and delivers unmatched economic benefit to the city and to the state, the entire region. At the same time, the Annapolis Power Boat Show is the largest boat show between New Jersey and Florida, showcasing the breadth, here in Annapolis, we're showcasing the breadth of the powerboating industry and attracting thousands of enthusiasts at our waterfront each fall. Taken together, Annapolis represents fully 1/3 of the recreational marine businesses in Maryland, a sector that covers both sailing and powerboating and contributes to the $4.2 billion annual economic impact to the state. These shows are not just events. They're vital anchors of an industry that provides jobs, supports local businesses, many local businesses, sustains the vitality of the city's waterfront economy. By renewing these leases, the city of Annapolis secures the future of its world-class shows, protects its leadership position in both the sailing and powerboating communities, and ensures long-term stability and prosperity for residences and businesses alike. These shows are irreplaceable assets. They need the time, and their future at City Dock should be guaranteed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mary Eunson.
I'm Mary Eunson. I live at 139 Pine Crest Drive, Annapolis, Maryland 21403. And I am the president of the Annapolis Boat Shows. As you know, there are a lot of changes at City Dock. And most of them are pretty exciting. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work for the city. It's a lot of work for all the people doing the building and planning down there. And it's a lot of work for us. We're investing a lot of time and money into what this will look like for the boat shows and other festivals down at City Dock. And it's exciting. But having these leases is important to us because we're planning many, many years in advance. And so as this gentleman pointed out, rightfully so, currently, we have leases that end in 2030.
Sorry, that's not you, Mary. Keep going.
I'm long-winded, but I didn't think of it. Our leases end in 2030. And what this next round takes us to 2036 with an option to renew through 2040. And that is correct. We could exercise that option at any time. The city could also tell us if we're not doing all the right things with this lease, there are some remedies there as well. And rightfully so. I encourage anyone who's concerned to read the leases. They're long, they're a little complicated, they're a little boring. But you're welcome to call me or anyone at the city with questions about them. Easy way to reach me, best way, is mary@annaplesboatshows.com. It is long-term, and I understand concerns about that. Be happy, happy to address them. Our telephone number is also 410-268-8828. I'm a lifer here. I love Annapolis. I'm not going anywhere. And love being part of these boat shows. And I know we disrupt Annapolis a couple of weeks every year, but we really do try to give back. And we appreciate all of your support. We're looking forward to do boat shows here for many years. And I thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak on O-3225? Okay, I declare the public hearing closed on O-3225. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda for public hearings is O-3325, Lease of City Property, Market House.
Thank you. First person signed up to speak is Kirsten Whitaker. Please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kirsten Whitaker, 145 Main Street. I'm a proud Anapolitan born in the old hospital, which we now call Acton's Landing. And I have raised my two daughters here as well. I think that over the course of my 51 years, I've lived in just about every pocket of Annapolis. Fun fact, my first job was at Man Sandwiches in the Market House, sometime in the '80s, if you're counting. I know the old Market House, and I loved it. And I've lived through many iterations since then. And I find this current version of the Market House to be the most dynamic and vibrant version so far, offering something for everyone. As a local Realtor who lives here and works right on Main Street in downtown Annapolis, I want to take a moment to speak in strong support of the Market House, not just as a historic landmark, but as a living, breathing part of our community and economy. The Market House is more than a building. It's a gateway into the soul of Annapolis. It attracts visitors, it supports small businesses, and it creates the kind of vibrant street life that makes visitors say, "I want to live here." When prospective buyers ask what makes Annapolis special, I don't just show them beautiful houses. I show them the lifestyle. And the Market House is at the heart of that. It's a symbol of our heritage and a space for innovation and connection. Supporting the Market House means investing in the character and future of our city. So let's keep it thriving for residents, for local business owners, and for the generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next person to sign up to speak, Jennifer Atkins.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Atkins, 119 Granville Avenue, where I have lived for almost 30 years and raised four kids with my husband. Market House holds a special place in our lives, not just as a historic building in a prominent downtown location, but as a part of a vital, part of our community. Our two daughters both worked at Market House during their high school and college years. It was more than a summer job for them. It was more of an introduction into the local workforce, a chance to connect with neighbors and visitors, and a place where they learned real responsibility in a supportive, locally-owned establishment. Market House is where we meet friends for a meal, grab a drink at the bar, enjoy community events, listen to live music, and feel the heartbeat of our city. Market House also regularly hosts and supports events for local nonprofits, from providing food and gift cards for community fundraisers to partnering with organizations. Last year, I attended the Annapolis Betterment Bash at Market House to raise funds for local families in need. It was a great night, and Market House was the perfect venue where neighbors gathered for live music, food, and drink for a good cause. Like every night at Market House, I noted that during the fundraising event, the owners were on-site, working in the kitchen, cooking food, serving drinks, and bussing tables alongside their employees. Whether it's providing visibility for nonprofit initiatives, donating space or resources, or simply being a reliable hub for civic engagement, the Market House exemplifies what it means to be a good neighbor. I often see comments, especially on social media, when historic photos of Annapolis are shared, about how much people miss the way the city used to be. I feel that nostalgia, too. I loved the old Market House with its individual stalls where you could grab a quick lunch or pick up fresh vegetables. Back in the '80s, I worked at Laura Ashley on Main Street and Bridges of Georgetown at Market Space. Both are long gone now. However, some beloved institutions have stood the test of time. McGarvey's, Middleton's, Storm Brothers, and others remain anchors in our historic district, places that residents and visitors return to again and again. Like the Market House, these businesses offer quality, reasonably-priced goods that are locally owned. They help define the charm and identity of Annapolis. While many of us miss the old-style Market House, that model simply isn't viable today. And it was tried again a couple of times in the last few decades and failed. The building then sat vacant for years, a blight on the historic district. The current Market House is thriving as it adapts to meet modern needs while preserving its local, community-focused spirit. The owners are committed to investing further and improving. The owners are committed to investing further in improvements and continuing to serve as a valuable part of downtown. I'm asking you to support the effort by extending their lease and giving them the stability they need to keep growing. Let's ensure the Market House has a chance to thrive for years to come. By extending their lease, you are supporting a small business, youth employment, and local nonprofits. Extending the lease also ensures Market House remains locally owned and true to its community roots while honoring the city's history and supporting its future. As a longtime resident, a parent, and a neighbor, I urge you to support the extension. The Market House has earned its place and deserves the opportunity to keep serving future generations the way it has served ours. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next up, Tom Creek. Next up, Tom Creek.
Tom Creek, 14 Murray Avenue, Annapolis. I don't think anybody who's speaking here tonight about the market lease, Market House lease, is going to say negative about the Market House. I think we all enjoy it, we've all spent time there. But we're talking about the business transaction, and this is a business transaction. And there's a lot of tension and emotion built around this transaction, and that's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing to have tension and emotion around a business transaction. The issue is, is that you need two good, competing ideas to have that tension and have that emotion. We only know one idea, and that's what the lease represents. Bless you. We only know one idea, that's what the lease represents. The lease represents a bad idea right now. That's all we know. When we ask our city officials, both publicly and privately, we can't get a good idea. We can't get a competing good idea. And that's really what the issue is. This is a city asset, it's clearly a city asset, and based on this lease, it's not being maximized to go through the lease. So I asked the city officials here tonight, provide the competing good idea of why we should be doing this lease and the way it is. That's a really important hurdle to get over. If you can't do that, then don't vote it out of committee, table it until the next administration, next council comes along. If it's a good idea now, it'll be a good idea in six months from now, it'll be a good idea a year from now. I thank you for your time.
Next up, Dan Douglas.
Dan Douglas, 215 Wardour Drive. My family moved to Annapolis in 1970, just as the Market House was being saved from demolition, restored, and reinvigorated. Since 1972, we've witnessed changes in the Market House that I categorize into three eras: the farm-to-table era, the fast-food era, and the public-house era. During the farm-to-table era of the 1970s and early 80s, the Market House fulfilled the role defined for it in the original charter that created the Market House. It was a one-stop shopping destination for superior food products. During the farm-to-table era, the Market House was surrounded by other City Dock mom-and-pop stores offering goods that locals needed and shop for daily. Locals could get groceries at Rookie's Market and pants at Jack's Reliable Store, gear for the boat at Stevens or Fawcett's, and in the Market House, sandwiches at Curran's Deli and at Mrs. Mann's, bread at the bakery stall, specialty cheeses, produce at Kaufman's Fancy Fruits and Vegetables. Market House vendors offered quality, fresh fruits not commonly found elsewhere. By the mid-1980s, City Dock and Market House started changing from a shopping center for locals to a busy tourist destination. Mom-and-pop stores began to close, parking became more challenging, and at the Market House, visitors began favoring prepared foods eaten on-site to high-quality ingredients meant for the dinner table. The fast-food era had begun. By the mid-1990s, Market House was a market in name only. It was described by residents and in committee reports as "the cafeteria of Annapolis," "a food court for Main Street," and "a major fast-food operation." For a decade, the city produced studies and formed committees to identify problems and propose solutions, but meanwhile, the business model of Market House did not respond to changing realities, and things at Market House continued to decline. The public-house era began with a 2017 request for proposals by the city to select new proprietorship for the Market House. The chosen bidder, New Market LLC, described its mission as "the creation of Annapolis' newest living room, a gathering spot to enjoy food, drink, music, conversation, and an informal atmosphere where locals and visitors can meet, linger, and socialize." The current proprietors have worked hard for eight years to fulfill the promise and to make the Market House lively, attractive, welcoming, and well-positioned for long-term success. What's best for the Market House and for the locals and visitors who enjoy it is that the present proprietors be granted the security and the vote of confidence of a lease extension.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir, for that rendition historically. I think it's extremely important for everyone to hear, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, Ron Gunsberger.
Good evening. Ron Gunsberger, 197 Hanover Street. Market House is part of the place I go to regularly. I enjoy it, I think it does great business. That said, that's not the issue before us. The issue is not, is it a great place to go? People enjoy it, I enjoy it, we like it. The real question is, what is the rush and why now? And the real question is, why this many years? Because it doesn't make sense for the residents. When we heard about the RFP process that brought this about, why not? Still a few years down the road, not today, not tomorrow, not next year, then we put it out again for RFP, and if the current tenant is the best proposal, which they well may be, people enjoy them, then we should keep going down that road. But why decide today what will essentially put in place something that will last for the next 20-plus years? It makes no sense, there's no urgency, there's no need to rush this through right now in the waning months of this council. Let's wait till it's time-appropriate, there is no rush. Stop trying to push this through, and let's actually look out for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Next up, Lori Sullivan.
Good evening, Lori Sullivan, 25 Wagner Street. Thank you for having me tonight. I concur, we all love the Market House. The Market House is a great night out. I go there frequently, and the staff is spectacular, we always have a good time. But as has also been said, that's not really the issue. I've been on both sides of commercial leasing, both as a tenant and as a property owner with tenants of my own. In all of my experience, I have never seen a lease that was so loose, so lacking in protections for the property owner, which in this case is the city, and so tilted in favor of the tenant. The lease that was signed in 2018 is already extremely favorable to the tenant. It set the base rent at just $8,000 a month, which is $18 per square foot, which is substantially under the similar values for properties that were ranging from $35 to $55 per square foot. So very, very favorable terms in terms of the lease amount. The tenant was exempted from paying property taxes, even though nearly every other for-profit business in Annapolis is required to pay them. Performance rent was set at only 2% of sales above $1.5 million. And despite the original deed prohibiting liquor sales, the tenant was able to secure a liquor lease and even had the right to walk away penalty-free if that license had not come through. Now, instead of correcting these one-sided terms, Bill Oath 3325 would double down on them. It would extend the lease all the way to 2033 and give the tenant renewal options that could lock up the public asset until 2053. It would cut performance rent in half of what they're currently paying, reducing it from 2% to just 1%, with no explanation of why. And it would continue allowing the tenant to sublease space and pocket the difference, leaving the city with no share of the revenue. And here's what makes this proposal truly outrageous: the current lease does not expire for another eight years. In all my years in experience with commercial leasing, I have never seen anything like this. It's unheard of to extend a lease at this magnitude so far in advance, especially on terms this unfavorable. Locking the city into nearly three more decades of this arrangement eight years early is not prudent stewardship. It's irresponsible. All of this comes against a troubling backdrop of missed payments, missing reports, and little transparency. At a previous council meeting, testimony was given that performance rent had not been paid, and since then, both the tenant and the mayor have claimed that that matter has been resolved, but the public has never seen those details. There have been no reports released, no clear disclosures, and no way for residents to verify whether the city has actually been made whole. Without transparency, the public is simply asked to take the word of the very parties who benefit the most from this arrangement. The Market House is not just another building, it's one of Annapolis' most iconic assets. Entering into such a long extension on such one-sided terms eight years before the current lease expires is outrageous. I urge you to vote no on 03325. Annapolis deserves a lease that protects the public interest, not one that gives it away.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Jody Danek. I live at 2981 Friends Road in Annapolis, Maryland. So obviously, here we are with Market House again. It's a contiguous thing, but I want to just address some of the misinformation and falsehoods that have been put out there, which we did address last meeting. I don't know why it continues to persist, but it does. So, you know, just on the basic facts of the matter, okay? Last year alone, we paid $171,000 to the city of Annapolis, okay? With performance rent, $8,400 in monthly rent, as well as leasing for parking spaces, okay? That comes out to about $35 a square foot, okay? $32 a square foot. Now, if you want to take the parking out, it's $29 a square foot. But any way you look at it, it isn't a dollar a square foot, and it's not $18 a square foot, okay? It's a significant amount of money that we pay every month, $14,000 to $15,000 a month to the city for the right and the privilege to work at the Market House and put 60 or 70 hours a week into it. My partners, Michelle, Joe, Bob, our general manager, who you guys heard last time, are very passionate about the Market House. I have memories of, some of my earliest memories, actually, were riding in a seat on the back of my mother's bicycle, probably 1971, all right? I have pictures of me in denim jeans and jeans jackets right in front of the Market House, and, you know, it's a part of my history, it's a part of our dream was to be there. And I think we've done a phenomenal job of doing what we said we were going to do. It is the city's living room, we have taken a space that had a lot of negative connotations to it and turned it into a place where your grandmother and your four-year-old grandson also can enjoy themselves, and everybody can have a good time there. It's not stuffy, and it's, I think it adequately represents exactly what Annapolis needed and what it wanted. So some of these issues about property taxes and about past leases and things like that, you know, it's, 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 the city and the state and federal government does not pay property taxes on their own assets. So the city would have no right to charge us property taxes on that city asset. So that's just bringing up a thing, you know, acting like we're supposed to be paying more for a liquor license because we have more, I have an extra minute, right?
No.
Yep, okay. I was worried I wasn't going to fill up three minutes. It acts like we need extra fees for liquor license because we have extra seats, it's just not how the liquor laws work in the city of Annapolis. There's one fee based on what type of stuff you had. And, you know, without your wine and liquor, it's not a viable business. You know, you want to turn it into a flower shop again, you want to let nonprofits hang out there, and the city support it? Great. But right now, we've been paying, and I think we've done a great job. We want security, we want to know that we can invest for the future, and we want to know that, you know, six, or four, or eight years from now, we're not going to get it ripped out from under us after we put another $300,000 into place, quite frankly, like the last tenant that happened to, that we were the beneficiary of. Now, I'm starting to feel a little bit like him, where I'm like, what the hell? So I don't want to belabor the fact, but we've put a lot of energy and time into it and money, and we want to continue to do that. And so that's why we want the security of extra five-year renewals, that's all we're asking. Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to come forward and speak on 03325?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Bill Kardashian, 17 South Street. So it's nice to hear that so many people are up to date as to what's been happening with the Market House. I've probably testified more on this than most citizens, but I'm, it's become kind of a project of sorts. Just to challenge one of the comments that Jody just made, this whole question of property tax is not something that's arbitrary. I can point to two properties at Market Space. One is the Oyster Bar portion of McGarvey's, and the other one is the former Customs House, or the Customs House, which Historic Annapolis had. Both of those properties are owned by nonprofits. During the time that Historic Annapolis had the Customs House, they paid no property tax. When they sublet it to a realty firm, the realty firm then was required to pay property tax. The building at the McGarvey's Oyster Bar, which is basically the historic side of the building, the people at McGarvey's pay property tax on that piece of property, even though it is owned by Historic Annapolis. So this question that it's arbitrary because the city owns the Market House, it just is not accurate. The other question is, and I think the basic is, the Market House is probably the most iconic building in the city. From its value to the city as an asset, I believe it's enormous. The price that the tenant is currently paying is, round numbers, $19 a square foot. What they're asking for, and others have discussed this, the idea of renewing a lease that doesn't expire for eight years is very unusual, highly unusual. So I'll just go back to, before the lease was signed in 2018, I encouraged members of the council to come to a meeting that I had arranged with a local Realtor. At that meeting, Alderman Arnett, Alderman Finlayson, Alderman Pindell Charles, and Alderman Payone attended for what was a very instructional and very helpful analysis of what the realty market and what the value of the Market House was. Because of the size of the room and because of timing, the other four members of the council, who included Rob Savage, Mark Rodriguez, Ellie Tierney, and Shanika Henson, I believe at the time, refused to attend, frankly. They, and surely thereafter, guess what? The Market House lease was approved. Good for you. So you got, you got an unusual building at an incredible price. The idea that this lease should be renewed eight years into the future, I just saw today an analysis that was done, if you were to project the cost of living increase through 2050, which is the termination date of the last term of this extended lease, the gross rental is over a half a million dollars. Currently, at the current rate, it would escalate to $132,000. There's a $400,000 swing between what the value is to the tenant and what the market-rate value would be. That is not equitable. It's bad business, and if for no other reason that the economics of this is so distorted, the council should vote no on 03325.
Anybody else like to come forward and speak?
Hi, good evening. Keith Wushard, 18 Bryce Road, 21409 Annapolis. My wife, Michelle, is one of the three partners with Jody and Joe Lyon in the Market House. I'm very much involved, and I've spoken to this council, you know, several times before. I'd just like to share a couple of thoughts on why and clear up some of the misunderstandings or fabrications of the truth, whichever way you want to look at it, as to where we are. And I say that guardedly because I do know that there may not be a ton of information out there, but there are some people in the room that have my phone number. that haven't even called to find out what the numbers really are. So before writing opinions and letters, it would be a great privilege to be able to give out information. As Jody mentioned, we are a business that is vibrant. A lot of people here have stood up and said how much they enjoy what Michelle and Jody and Joe have, and all the number of the associates that are here today have provided. And, you know, the payment to the city through July 1st or June 30th of 2025 for the 12 months fiscal year was $171,000. That's $100,000-ish in rent, $101,000 in rent, plus a performance rent, which was $40-something thousand, plus the parking fee. So it's $171,000. And I would challenge anybody to come up with a number anywhere close to that through the history of the Market House. I don't know that, I haven't seen that data. I haven't seen that sort of number before, but it's been anecdotal that it's been a lot, lot less than that. So I think they've done a really good job of making something there, putting something together there that the community wants and needs and is proud of, and visits it often. So if we look at the compound annual growth rate on the business since COVID, you know, if we did it off of pre-COVID, it would be off the charts. The numbers are silly, right? But if we did just from after COVID, the Market House business has grown at 23.3% per year. And that is the basis that the performance rent will increase on a go-forward basis if we can continue a trend similar to that. 23% a year is a lot. Now, if I just look at the last year, the most current year, you know, the most current year grew at 17%. Before that, it was 53%, then 23% before that, and 28% before that. So we've got a business model in place that's growing, and it's generating revenue for the city. It's providing a really good value for the public, and we want to be able to continue that. So the question is, why do we want, why should we be granted an extension of the lease? We need to put more money in the building. We need to put a lot more money into the building. I think what we've done is, when we took it over, it was like a food court, right? It was, you know, everything was kind of dented and damaged and misput together. It was what it was, right? We decided to really upgrade. We put mahogany paneling in the walls. We put marble countertops in. We put a nice bar in. By the way, city council code allows for beer and wine, allowed for beer and wine in the Market House before we took over the lease, okay? That was pre-existing. We did go to the city council and ask to upgrade to a liquor license, which we were granted 12:00 PM, 12:00 AM, or 12:00 AM midnight, license only, which we were granted. So yeah, that fact, I just want to clear that up. So we need to put a lot of money in the building. We're not, we're really happy with what we have right there, but we want a lot more. We want you to have a lot more. We want you to have better furniture outside. We want you to have a better experience inside. We want you to have upgraded food, even more so than what they put out so far. And that's going to cost a lot of money. For us to do that, we need clarity going forward.
Keith, sorry, it's been four minutes, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak on O 3325? You can just leave them, please. Thank you. You know the drill.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Congratulations to the retiring members of the council. You've earned it. And I want to remind you that the next meeting of the retired aldermen is going to be held in two weeks. I'll give you the location shortly. I don't blame Mr. Bussard and Mr. Danek for coming up here and advocating for their lease. They got a hell of a deal. And that's the problem with this proposed lease, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The city isn't getting its value for that property, and you guys and gals can make that difference by, number one, postponing consideration of this lease until it really needs to be renewed, which is at least six or seven years in the future, beyond the term of the next council that you're going to see elected in November. No commercial lease, and the private sector does business in this manner. It's totally inappropriate for the city to do so. The proposed lease continues to give away to the leaseholder, who has enjoyed city-allowed below-market lease rate since 2018. The giveaway continues under the proposed extension by setting a lease rate of $22.53 per square foot for the 5,326-square-foot Market House, or $120,000 per year for five years through June 30, 2028. The proposed lease allows for three additional five-year extensions at the sole discretion of the lease lessee, with 5% escalation each of those five-year terms, for a square-foot rate of $26.08 or a total annual amount of $138,000 during the last five-year term. These lease rates are outrageously low. The lease rate, when compared to the present commercial lease rates on the Dock Street, Market Space, and Lower Main Street, are $65 to $70 per square foot. These current rates are three times greater than the rate the initial extension period in 2033. I might also add, the performance rent component of these leases drops from the current 2% to 1% in this proposed lease. Another little benefit. Commercial lease rates are triple, are listed as triple net leases, requiring the tenant to pay property-related expenses, such as property taxes. Everybody around the Market House pays property tax, but not the Market House. And the Market House is assessed for $2,137,500. That's $31,300 in property taxes that they're not paying, that all their neighbors are paying. What a deal. A crash-strapped city budget should surely benefit from a market-based rent on the Market House, and property taxes should be applicable to this commercial enterprise. Surrounding-city merchants are operating in a significant disadvantage to the cut-rate lease the city is proposing. I've attached a spreadsheet, which clearly shows the large discrepancy in lease rates between the Market House lease and the commercial lease rates in effect in the area. Then there's the issue of the amusement tax that the Market House tenant should be paying when live entertainment is operating. The annotated code of State of Maryland provides for tax, in the Tax General Volume, Section 4-101 through 4-105, for the amusement tax, and the City Code, Section 762.010 and Section 762.020, for the levy of the tax. Despite several inquiries to the city, I have been unable to ascertain if the city is in collecting these taxes. That question should certainly be answered. If the taxes are not being collected, it's a violation of the terms of the lease, as the tenant is to be current and all payments applicable under the lease. The taxpayers of Annapolis and the voters of Annapolis are watching you, and this is not the time to be considering this lease. Stop the rush. It's not the best thing in the city's interest and the taxpayers' interest. Thank you so much, and good luck to you all, especially you retiring aldermen. We're going to miss you.
Anybody else like to come forward on O 3325?
Good evening. Max Gross, 215 Taylor Avenue. I want to be clear that tonight I am testifying as a citizen and not a lobbyist for any causes. I am a lobbyist that deals with housing policy, property policy in my professional work, and I attend a lot of city council meetings. I attend a lot of county council meetings, talk to a lot of business owners. And what I hear about doing business in Annapolis and in the county all the time is, it takes too long. The rules are constantly changing. The process is arduous, and business owners feel like they can't operate with any sort of certainty. I hear a lot of complaints about downtown being taken over by Atlas. I hear a lot of complaints about the city being more for tourists than for residents. And tonight, it seems very strange that we have a local business being offered a lease extension, and we're being told by business community, slow down. Pay more taxes. Make them go through more hoops. Let's maximize profit on this property. And I'm certain that we could maximize profit on this property by putting it up for a new lease every three to six years, every four to eight years. Atlas will put a bid on it. They'll put in something fancy. The city will be in charge of putting in any improvements because the lease terms won't justify the investment. I have no idea what's in this lease. I am coming to this issue tonight fresh, just based on what I've heard in the testimony tonight. But it does really strike me as a strange shift in opinions that when the property in question is owned by the city, we want to make it as hard as possible for the business to operate. And when the property is owned by a private entity, we want to make it as easy as possible for the businesses to operate. Just seems like a strange contradiction, and I want to point it out. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward on O 3325?
Good evening. My name's Ken Vincent. I live at 717 Monterey Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us here. I just want to speak very briefly. I won't even use my three minutes, but I agree with pretty much everything everybody said relative to the history, the value, the culture of Market House. I remember being here in the early '80s, going to Market House, enjoying it then. Through the '90s and through the last 10 years, as I saw it morph into what it is today, Market House is an important part of our community. I'm not going to argue with who's paying taxes, who's not paying taxes, how much they're paying, et cetera. My concern here is, I just don't think it's a good idea for governance here to say, let's extend a sole-source contract out 13 years with extensions to go beyond that. It's just something that 13 years from now, I have no idea what I'm going to be seeing here in Annapolis. I don't know what the community is going to be like, what the other business is going to be like. We need to have the options to have people look at this and say, is this the best thing for Annapolis? It's not necessarily maximizing our profit here. I don't believe we should be. But we should be maximizing our value to the community. And by going to at least 2038 and saying, this is the model that we want to go forward with, I'm just not familiar with that in government. I don't remember ever having a sole-source contract in the federal government that went 13 more years. People have to rebid, RFPs. And if it's the best thing for us to continue to do, we do that. And I believe that the business can survive as well. Many businesses do not get... I don't know if too many businesses get 13-year leases on their restaurants. So I would suggest very strongly that we put this off for three, four years until it's time to rebid the contract. I certainly appreciate Market House. I appreciate the ownership. I appreciate the people working there. But I just think it's a bad idea for us to go with a sole-source lease for that period of time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We do do sole-source, Watermark Cruises, and also the Boat Show sole-source. Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak? Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sure. The next item on the agenda is O 3425, FY 2026 Changes in Exempt Service Job Classification.
Have no one signed up to speak on that? All right, going once, going twice. I declare the public hearing closed on O 3425. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is O 3525, Rank Choice Voting in Annapolis City Elections.
All right. Before we go through this... Lots of people. How many people are opposed to it that are here? Okay, all right. Sorry, I thought it was all one-sided. Thank you. So first person signed up to speak is Michael Pelletier. Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Mike Pelletier, 1207 Holly Oak Road in Odenton. I'm a volunteer with and the state leader of Veterans For All Voters Maryland. I'm here today in support of implementing rank choice voting here in Annapolis. As a Navy veteran, I am obligated to start with a sea story. Well, I see I sought to cast my vote in a contentious primary with a crowded field of candidates. Unfortunately, I felt compelled not to vote for the candidate that best represented me, but for the one that had the best chance of beating the candidate I didn't want to win. When you're aboard ship, you really have to calculate out when you're going to drop your ballot in the mail. It's based on when the mail will leave the ship, when it's going to make it ashore, and when it's going to make it all the way back to the Board of Elections. So I dropped my ballot in the mail, far enough out, and then I checked the news, and the candidate I had voted for had dropped out. My ballot was effectively useless. Had ranked choice voting been available at the time, I could have ranked my choices, prioritizing the candidate I wanted. My vote would have mattered. I do want to address with RCV. Everywhere it's used, voters like and understand RCV. Alaskans, New Yorkers, and our friends in Arlington overwhelmingly find RCV easy and want to use it again. With RCV, all voters get one vote. It is one person, one vote. It's not weighted. It's not extra. It's just your highest-ranking remaining candidate receives your vote. Every court that has examined whether RCV upholds one-person-one vote has said that it does. RCV elections can be tabulated instantly and transparently. This is not a complicated process. Very easy to teach election judges how to count them, to do a hand count. That being said, we use computers to speed that up, just like we use computers to speed up every other process that we do. This is extremely transparent because there are cast vote records, so that people can audit and make sure that the results that you receive are, in fact, the results that people voted. I appreciate the council's efforts in making Annapolis elections more responsive to voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Susan Duff.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
My name is Suzanne Duffy. I live in Ward 2. Did you know that the Department of Justice is coming down on the Maryland State Board of Elections?
Susan, just an address, please.
17 King Court.
Thank you.
Did you know that the Department of Justice is coming down on the Maryland State Board of Elections for over 238,000 voter role illegal violations? This is a story that just dropped in the last two weeks. Maryland has a 98% voter registration rate. Our voter rolls are incredibly bloated. The norm is about 74%. I began my day today at Lawyer's Mall at the Only Citizens Vote Rally with the Maryland Freedom Caucus. Now I'm here as someone who has been active in voter integrity for over four years. I implore you to vote against ranked choice voting, also known as RCV. As of September 2025, 17 states across the country have banned ranked choice voting. That's four new states since March. RCV is widely known to disenfranchise marginalized communities. RCV is confusing and is designed to be that way. Low-income minorities are disproportionately affected by ballot exhaustion. RCV produces a lack of voting integrity, with 77% of polled Americans already believing elections are problematic. Why do this? So-called winners will be elected without the majority of votes. Gaming the system is often done by adding a less-threatening second choice to rig the outcome. Often, the winner of RCV would not have won under traditional voting methods. Then there is the expense. The cost is substantial. But do any of you care? Who's going to... Who's going to pay for it? Hello, tax dollars. The lawsuits that follow RCV are monumental. Does Annapolis need more lawsuits? This is an exceptionally bad voting practice. This one-party rule, to shove this through as a council, many more of us will be forced to move. We are being suffocated by out-of-control city spending, and more tax hikes are coming. This is beyond the pale, this is a dangerous path to take. What we see is what's happening here, and it's not good. Half of Annapolis already has zero representation. If you think you don't have a voice now, if RCV is crammed through, we never will. RCV will ensure that the powers that have run Annapolis into the ground for the last eight years will always be in power. An independent, an old-school Democrat, a Green, or even a Republican will never hold a seat in Annapolis again. When you combine this last-minute meeting with all of the carefully chosen agenda items in the last stretch of what I think is like the destruction tour, it becomes clear that this is a socialist ticket to hold power in perpetuity. Thank you.
Aldman Hanley.
I just wanted to correct one thing in particular, the witness said that we actually have a lot of good research that voters of color are more likely to rank more candidates, so they are less likely to have ballot exhaustion. I think that's an important point.
Okay, thank you. Next up, David Mosberger, please come forward. He's not here? Okay, we'll go down the line. Morgan Drayton?
Good evening, Mayor Buckley and members of the council. My name is Morgan Drayton, Policy Manager for Common Cause Maryland, which is located at 121 Cathedral Street. Common Cause is a nonpartisan grassroots organization dedicated to upholding the core values of our democracy. We are a good governance group working to create open, honest, and accountable government that serves the public interest. And that's why I'm here tonight in support of ranked choice voting. Ranked choice voting, or RCV, empowers voters to better express their preferences at the ballot, at the ballot box by eliminating the need for strategic voting. Under RCV, a vote for your favorite candidate never helps the candidate that you like the least. This will allow Annapolis voters more freedom to voice their true preferences, rather than forcing a choice between the two most popular candidates that may not represent them or their interests. RCV encourages candidates to run civilized, community-focused campaigns that appeal to broader constituencies in order to garner those second and third choice supports. And most importantly, RCV guarantees that the winning candidate is supported by the majority of the voters. I do want to stress the importance that a local government-led public education campaign be part of the implementation process for this bill. This will help ensure that voters are aware of the changes and cut down on confusion once they enter the ballot box. RCV is a simple, proven, and constitutionally sound method of election that helps to shift power back to the voters, and helps ensure that our elected officials are truly representative of the communities that they're representing. For these reasons, we would request a favorable report on Ordinance 2535. Thank you.
Next up, Steve Brown.
Yep, Steve Brown? Yep. Okay, I'm Steve Brown. I'm with the Secure Vote Maryland. Okay, we're a nonpartisan organization that advocates for free, fair, and secure elections. I am not a resident of Anarundel County or this Annapolis. Okay, so what do we all want, or should want, in elections? That they be free, fair, and transparent, or FFT. Ranked choice voting does not promote FFT elections. Here are the multiple reasons why. First, you cannot vote against a candidate. You have to rank candidates that you may never in your whole freaking life consider voting for. By including a candidate in the ranking, you have voted for that candidate. Number two, extreme candidates can win. Large vote disparities in initial outcomes can be overcome, and a candidate that a majority of the voters do not or will not support can win. Number three, moderates get squeezed out. Votes get divided up between extreme factions. Number four, ballot exhaustion. If a voter doesn't rank all candidates, because the voter never ranked all the candidates, that voter's ballot becomes exhausted and will be thrown out in later rounds. So it is that voter never voted. This is not inclusive at all as people's votes are discarded. Number five, lower voter participation. Measurement of voter participation in RCV elections has consistently shown that it lowers turnout, precisely the opposite effect desired in a democratically-elected representative society. In Minneapolis, St. Paul, and San Francisco, which have had ranked choice voting for a while, voter turnout has consistent, been consistently lower than in earlier elections without RCV. Number six, it is confusing to voters, it is complicated and hard to explain, thus it decreases transparency. This is precisely against the principles of FFT that I outlined in the introduction. Confusion leads to lower turnout. Fairfax County utilized RCV in 2022 local elections, and all the reports I have heard were very negative for the reasons cited. In fact, 17 states, as Ms. Duffy pointed out, have already banned the practice, with what, four earlier this year. Okay, number seven, more chances for fraud. Because of the complexity, it is more difficult to track the election. RCV requires more handling of ballots, more transportation of ballots, more chain of custody issues, and more adjudication, which opens up the system to potential fraud. Finally, the reporting delays. An RCV election is practically not auditable because of ballot exhaustion. The multiple rounds with ballot exhaustion result in delays in determining the winner. In 2021, New York City took nearly a month to declare a winner. In 2022, Alaska, the results took more than two weeks to determine. In summary, RCV increases election complexity, decreases transparency, increases the time to achieve the outcome, lowers voter participation and confidence in the elections, and finally, it does increase the cost, which I haven't even addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Next up, Ryan Kirby.
Hello, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ryan Kirby. I'm the Director of Policy at the Rank Choice Voting Resource Center. I do not have the good fortune of living in Annapolis, but I do live in Anarundel County, so I hope that still gives me a little bit of something. The Rank Choice Voting Resource Center is a nonpartisan nonprofit. We are dedicated to working with election administrators across the country to implement ranked choice voting. We focus on voter education, best practices for election administration, those kinds of things. And we are not advocates, so I'm not here to tell you to vote for RCV or not to vote for RCV, just here to share some information about ranked choice voting, here to answer any questions if there are any, but also to share that our organization is more than happy to work with the city of Annapolis if you do adopt ranked choice voting. We've worked with jurisdictions from across the country, Portland, Oregon, to Portland, Maine, and New York City and everything in between. And we have also developed the open-source software, the, for ranked choice voting tabulation, it's also known as RC Tab, been used in elections across the country, including one of the most recent ones, New York City. So happy to talk about that, answer any other questions, and work with the city about that. Last thing I want to clarify is some of the information from one of the previous speakers about exhausted ballots. The voter did participate in that election. Because ranked choice voting, you're not forced to vote for anybody that you would never support. That is, the result sometimes is that, you know, if you just want to vote for one candidate or one or two candidates, by default, you can just choose to not rank all of those candidates, but you still participate, you made your voice heard, and you gave that candidate the support they needed to possibly get a little bit further around in the rounds of election. But thank you again for letting me speak, and I look forward to hearing from some of the wonderful residents about their opinions on ranked choice voting. Happy to work with the city.
Thank you. Aldman Savage?
Just, so this is not the time to have a back-and-forth questions, but if you could leave your card with Mr. Jackson, I would like to get in touch.
Yeah.
Next up, Laura Duncan.
My name is Laura Duncan. I live at 1012 Tyler Avenue, 21403. I live in Ward 8, and I am testifying in support of ranked choice voting at an ordinance O 3525. The morning of my 18th birthday, after I had breakfast, the first thing I did was go out and register to vote. I've voted in every election since, and voting is essential to have your voice heard. As I'm sure you're all aware, unaffiliated voters now make up the second-largest group of voters in the city of Annapolis. This should be a wake-up call to the two major parties here in the city. It is clear that more and more voters are looking for alternatives to the two major parties. In a city as small as Annapolis is, this should be easy, but our current voting system makes that difficult. When there are more than two candidates on the ballot, voters find themselves having to vote strategically, because otherwise, they feel their vote will not count. We don't want voters to vote against what they really want. At the same time, we are discouraging unaffiliated candidates from running at all. We need change in Annapolis, and that change starts with enacting ranked choice voting for our elections. With ranked choice, you get to rank the candidates in your order of preference. Your vote counts toward your top choice. If no candidate reaches the winning threshold of votes, the candidate is, in the last place is eliminated, and voters have their next choice counted. This continues until we have a winner. So, if your top choice is eliminated, your vote goes to your next choice. Every voter has a greater chance of electing a candidate of their choice, ensuring that your vote actually matters. Thank you very much.
Next up, Zoe Bodek.
Good evening, Mayor Buckley and City Council members. My name is Zoe Bodek. My address is 43 Dean Street, Annapolis, Maryland, 21401. I'm testifying in support of ranked choice voting and ordinance O 3525. Of the many benefits of RCV, I'm going to use my time to discuss how campaigns in RCV elections are more civil. Voters across the US are tired of toxic campaigns in which candidates try to win by generating fear about what the other candidates will do if elected. But this trend shouldn't be a surprise, it's the product of a plurality system that rewards candidates for attacking every other candidate, even if they have some alignment on the policies. Alternatively, in RCV elections, candidates are incentivized to show where they agree and disagree with each other to try to earn voter second, third, or fourth choice. We saw this play out in the Democratic primary for mayor in New York City this year, when several candidates chose to cross-endorse, recommending that their supporters rank a particular candidate second because there was general alignment on policies. In this way, voters had a real opportunity to understand the true alignment of candidates. In cities and states that use RCV, there's real data to demonstrate increased civility. A 2016 study from researchers at the University of Iowa and Western Washington University found that people in cities with RCV were significantly more satisfied with the conduct of local campaigns than people in similar cities with plurality elections, and less likely to view campaigns as negative, and less likely to respond that candidates were frequently criticizing each other. Direct surveys of voters in Virginia Republican primaries and Santa Fe City elections were conducted after RCV was adopted in each jurisdiction, and voters in both instances said that they felt like the elections were more positive than the prior plurality systems. A quote from New York City Council member Natasha Williams sums up the increase in civility with RCV quite well. Commenting on how RCV impacted her campaigning, she said, "If I saw a lawn sign for someone else, I would go to the house and say, hey, I agree with them on that, will you rank me second?" Something I would have never done in a non-RCV election. Annapolis may not be the epicenter of toxic campaigning, but we certainly are not immune to it. Let's be a model of what great elections can look like for other cities across Maryland and the broader country. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Aldman Gay?
I'm just curious about the, and if you could also email me the articles or reports as it relates to civility in the races. The reason I've asked that, we've all watched the news, the New York City mayor's race has been one of the most uncivil political races I've ever seen in my life. Eric Adams, Kumo, Mondami, they're literally attacking each other every single day. So I don't, I would, I just would disagree with that. I'd be interested in looking at some of the facts, and if I'd be, if you would share that for me, that'd be great.
Thank you. All right, now, next up, Karen Jennings.
Hello, my name is Karen Jennings. I live at 1022 Park Avenue in Eastport. I'm here tonight to ask for your support of O 3525, ranked choice voting in the city of Annapolis. In a nation that's increasingly polarized and antagonistic, ranked choice voting is a way to unite voters and reinvigorate engagement and confidence in election outcomes, knowing that the winner truly has the support of the majority. It's a voting method that's been used successfully both within the United States and abroad. Heather Cox Richardson, the well-known historian who publishes The Daily Letters from an American, has become a big proponent of ranked choice voting since her home state of Maine adopted it in 2018. In her weekly live videos, she's talked about how RCV allows Senators Lisa Murkowski and Susan Collins to better stand up for their constituents against the political pressures because they know that they have broad support amongst voters in their state, and that they won't be bumped out by a party extremist in a primary plurality vote. Plurality meaning when somebody wins with less than 50% of the vote. As some of you may recall, I ran for the Ward 2 City Council seat in the 2007 special election. I was a minor party candidate in a three-way race, and I worked just as hard as my opponents to win votes in that election. In fact, I probably worked harder than my opponents because there were only six people in that ward who were registered with my political party. I knocked on every single door in the ward multiple times, and from that effort, I learned that my supporters were largely independents and others who had become disengaged from elections because they were tired of the same-old, same-old. My campaign brought people to the polls who had not voted in a municipal election in years, if ever. Despite that, to this day, I still receive complaints that I somehow spoiled that election, even though the incumbent readily won reelection in two-way races after that. These are the attitudes that discourage people from running for office, or even from voting. Losing these diverse viewpoints in our electoral process is a disservice to all of us. No matter where you fall on the political spectrum, I think that we can all agree that there's a serious problem in this nation with polarization, lack of confidence, and disengagement from the electoral process. Ranked choice voting is an opportunity to course correct. Yes, we're just one small municipality, but we are the state capital, and we should lead by example. We can also take some assurance that, from the fact that of all the municipalities nationwide that have adopted RCV, none of them have changed their minds and gone back to the old way of voting. So thank you for your time, and I please hope that you'll vote in support of O 3525. Thank you.
Next up, Sophie Westfield.
Good evening. My name's Sophie Westfield. I live at 144 Duke of Gloucester Street in Annapolis, Maryland, and I just want to share my support for adopting ranked choice voting for municipal elections. I really think that ranked choice voting is an extremely advantageous system in comparison to our current plurality system. Being able to share one's preference for more than one candidate really allows people to vote for their values and the values of their community. In our current plurality elections, voters are tasked with trying to determine who the top two candidates will be, and potentially wondering that a vote for anyone else will be a waste. Occasionally, we might be excited for one of the presumed top two candidates on the ballot, but more and more frequently, it feels like a choice between the lesser of two evils. Under a plurality system, it's really no wonder that voters are rarely inspired to get out and vote, and thus it's no surprise that we really struggle with high voter turnout. I was actually a longtime resident of New York before moving to Annapolis, and recently, many of my friends and family members were able were able to see ranked choice voting in action in the Democratic primary race this summer in New York City. Many of them spoke about feeling excited to go cast their vote in ways they hadn't felt previously. Under the ranked choice voting system, they really knew that their votes had an impact on the outcome of the election, even if their first choice wasn't in the final round of tabulation. So while there are plenty factors that impact voter turnout, data really suggests that ranked choice voting elections can increase voter turnout. Specifically, a 2024 study compared voter turnout in ranked choice voting and non-ranked choice voting elections in 2021. After controlling for other factors, the researchers found that individuals living in ranked choice voting jurisdictions were 17% more likely to vote. An earlier study from 2021 focused specifically on youth voter turnout and had the same conclusion that ranked choice voting was a factor in increasing turnout. Some people have expressed concern that ranked choice voting would increase the disparity in voter turnout among historically marginalized groups, but again, research suggests otherwise. A 2016 study by Kimball and Anthony from the University of Missouri found that ranked choice voting did not impact inequities in turnout in Minneapolis City elections when comparing elections before and after the adoption of ranked choice voting. Additionally, ranked choice voting has been shown to make room for more diverse and representative candidates to run for office. So with ranked choice voting, more voters are likely to see a candidate in the field that reflects their values and backgrounds. All this research backs up the principle that when voters have an opportunity to vote for candidates that are exciting to them without feeling like they're wasting their vote, they are more likely to make the effort to go out and vote. Voting takes up time, energy, money on transportation, or lost work, and unfortunately, the lesser of two evils isn't enough to draw many people to the polls. So I really think ranked choice voting would increase voter engagement and turnout, and really revitalize people's faith in the democratic process in our municipal elections. So thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next up, Michael Cosmeides.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, my name's Michael Cosmeides. I live at 193 Hilltop Lane. I'm testifying today in support of ranked choice voting and ordinance O 3525. Voters here in Annapolis want an election system that puts them first. Because ranked choice voting allows voters to rank the candidates, they can express more preferences between candidates at the ballot box. Recent surveys and jurisdictions that use RCV like Alaska, Maine, Arlington, Virginia, and cities in California and Utah all found that over 80% of voters thought RCV was simple and easy to use. After the New York City primary this year, a whopping 96% of voters found that their ballot was simple to complete. Evidence of how many candidates voters choose to rank farther supports that they claim that RCV is easy to use. Fair Vote examined the share of voters and ranked more than one candidate across many elections, and found that the median of 68% of voters ranked more than one candidate in the medium RCV election. That figure increased to 75% in elections with five or more candidates. Furthermore, ballot errors in ranked choice voting elections have been shown to have no change from prior proportional elections. It is true that voters make errors on their ballot and vote for more than one candidate in a single round. However, research suggests that it occurs at a very similar rate to the share of voters that vote for more than one candidate in non-ranked choice voting elections, when they are supposed to only select one candidate. Specifically, a 2021 study from the researchers at University of Louisiana found that ranked ballots do not raise the probability that a voter would cast a void vote. Multiple other studies have confirmed that this finding does not change when looking at minority voters specifically. All data points show that voters overwhelmingly like ranked choice voting once they have used it. This year, a Fair Vote survey in Charlottesville, Virginia, found that 89% of people supported using ranked choice voting in future elections. After the New York City election this year, 76% of voters wanted to keep RCV and or expand it to general elections. Lastly, researchers from Utah Valley University found 94% of voters in local jurisdictions that use ranked choice voting were satisfied with the system. Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up, Christine Cosmeides.
I don't think they.
All right, I've got two, two people down here. Ron Gunsberger is next. It said, Cosmeides, Christine, and then Michael, same, same last name. Okay, thank you. Okay, Ron, go ahead.
Good evening. Ron Gunsberger, 197 Hanover Street. I think that the current proposal of RCV you have before you is actually an unwise proposal, and I say it for this reason. If you look what happened in New York is a good example, is in a party primary, to keep partisan primaries and apply RCV to partisan primaries, you often get the more polarizing candidate winning, not the more moderate candidate winning, if that's the stated goal of this. It actually encourages, sometimes if you look who votes in party primaries on both sides of the aisle, it is usually those who are much more, if you want to use the term hardcore, but that's who the candidates are. If you do want to explore RCV, perhaps the solution is make it a nonpartisan primary and apply RCV, and then you at least everyone can vote in the same primary. However, I'd suggest the best solution, and I do appreciate that this essentially is an acknowledgement that the current system isn't the best solution, is going to a nonpartisan primary in the system, in the city, just a nonpartisan primary. Everyone runs, it's what they have in a bunch of states, it's often called the jungle primary. If any candidate gets 50% plus one vote, that race is over at that point in the primary. If no one gets a majority, the top two advance to November, and someone gets a majority. Then when we hear all these stats about in an academic setting where people think of ranked choice voting, Maine only has partial ranked choice voting. The only state that has full ranked choice voting is Alaska. In Alaska, the voters last year, they've now had it for several years, the voters last year voted 49.9% of them to repeal ranked choice voting. In fact, part of what it was, was the confusion on the ballot that voting yes was voting no in ranked choice voting. So it's going to be on the ballot again next year, reworded, apparently. The court's already approved it. But it lost by roughly 700 votes statewide for a state that had been using it for a few years, that the voters who actually use it statewide did not like it, as we saw by the vote, 49.9%. Let's try to fix our elections in the city. Let's try to move to what frankly every community in Maryland, other than Annapolis, Baltimore City, and Frederick, have moved to nonpartisan elections. We are one of the only three remnant partisan elections. Let's go to that. Let's get the whole community involved in our elections and have, I think, a more representative council of our populace as a whole. Thank you.
Next up, Lori Sullivan.
Hello again. Lori Sullivan, 25 Wagner Street. I want to share my concerns about the ranked choice voting bill before you, and let me be very clear. I am not opposed to ranked choice voting. I'm open to learning more about it, but what troubles me is the process by which the bill is being advanced. Changing our election system is not a small administrative matter. It's a fundamental shift in how our democracy works right here in Annapolis. And yet, the council has allowed for this one meeting for public input, and nowhere near enough time or energy for the public to weigh in, to learn, and to debate. Anapolitans for a Better Community, a respected nonpartisan group, has been working diligently to put open primaries on the ballot this year. There are already ideas being pursued in good faith, especially since a significant share of Annapolis voters are independents who cannot participate in our primaries. But instead of opening the discussion, this bill narrows it to a single option in a single meeting. If we say we care about democracy, then we should act like it. That means putting voters, not just this council, in charge of deciding how elections are run. This deserves broad engagement and ultimately, a referendum, so that the people themselves, and not just a handful of elected officials, can make such a significant choice. And I would argue that many of the bills that have been before you this year have not felt like there's been sufficient public engagement and input, and I think that that has caused a lot of angst among the voting public. And I would really encourage you to use this bill as an opportunity to open the doors, get more public engagement, because these are significant things that we're asking for change, you know, considering for change, and it just feels too much like a select few are making really dramatic decisions without a significant amount of input from the greater public at large. So I would very much appreciate if you consider. We're all open to lots of options, but could we have a better discussion about them? Thank you so much.
Next up, Robert Tufts.
Hello, my name is Robert Tufts. I reside at 1012 Tyler Avenue, 21403 in Ward Eight. And I am testifying in support of ranked choice voting and ordinance O 3525. And just real quick to address Alderman Gay's concern about the New York City elections, it should be noted, New York City only uses RCV in its primary elections. It does not use RCV in its general elections. During the primary elections, you did find candidates actually getting along, and candidates were actually cross endorsing one another in order to be that second option, you know, under someone's first option. So just to clarify that. When we allow voters to rank candidates, ranked choice voting is going to give us more information on voting preferences than single-choice voting. RCV makes ballots count, more ballots count, in the final outcome. Ranked choice voting makes an average of 17% more ballots count in the outcome of a race. In contests that actually go to an RCV tabulation, the average increases to 30%. Voters, of course, are never required to rank all candidates, just like in our elections now. You can skip over a race if you want to, or maybe write someone in. RCV results are easy to verify. Most ranked choice voting jurisdictions will release a cast vote record of the election, and this allows for independent inspection and analysis, creating a high degree of transparency. The counting process for ranked choice voting elections is, involves very basic addition and subtraction. Every jurisdiction that uses ranked choice voting uses verifiable paper ballots. When there's a paper record like that, these elections can be audited, and their outcomes then verified. And as you've also heard from other speakers, under RCV, the error is low, and it is comparable to single-choice elections. Research that's been done indicates that the ballot error in ranked choice voting elections is very low and follows the same patterns as election, as non-RCV elections. As someone who has spent the last two, over two decades in local politics, both Annapolis and Anarundel County, as a volunteer, as a campaign manager, I even ran for office in 2006, I've knocked on a lot of doors, all around the city, all around the county, hundreds, maybe thousands. And if there's one thing that I can take away from talking to all those voters, and that is, voters want more choices, but they also want their votes to count. Under the current system, where if you have more than two candidates running in an election, a lot of people feel like they have to vote strategically, or their vote won't count. That's why I feel we need to open up our democracy here in Annapolis, and we need to enact ranked choice voting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Next up, Owen Anderson. Owen, are you for or against? Just kidding, no.
I think my testimony will speak for itself, Mayor. But I'm Owen Anderson, Deputy Director of Ranked Choice Voting Maryland. I've known this city a long time, my whole life. I was actually born at Anarundel Medical Center. But today, I'm testifying on behalf of our organization based at 8484 Georgia Avenue in Silver Spring. So Honorable Mayor and Annapolis Aldermen, today, Annapolis, Green Belt, and Rockville City Councils are all talking about ranked choice voting. But for this hearing, I have an important question for everyone listening to think about. Why are you here today? It may not be for ranked choice voting. There's been a lot of other topics on the agenda, but I think there's one reason for being here that we all share. I believe that each of us wants to be heard and have our voice matter in local politics and local elections. So if you're here today because you wanted to make your voice heard, could you please raise your hand? Thank you. And if you want that, if you want your voice to matter, I believe you will like ranked choice voting, which is designed to give every voter more choice and more voice in elections. You get to rank the candidates in your order of preference, and your vote counts in that order. If your top choice is eliminated, your vote goes to your next choice. And you've already heard a lot from residents, but I'd like to summarize some of the reasons that they've raised that they like RCV. One is RCV is liked and understood by voters because it is simple, quick, and transparent. RCV is used by nearly 14 million Americans in 50-plus jurisdictions like Tacoma Park. RCV allows more votes to count, increasing participation, voter engagement, and campaign civility while reducing strategic voting. RCV improves representation for historically marginalized groups, increasing rates that people of color, LGBTQ+ people, and women overall win elections. And ultimately, RCV gives voters more choice and more power. RCV Maryland also submitted a letter signed by state and local organizations who support O 3525. I have a copy of it with me, but the 12 signing organizations are Anarundel County NAACP, Anarundel County Indivisible, AZA Learning, Chesapeake Indivisible, Common Cause Maryland, League of Women Voters of Anarundel County, National Council of Jewish Women Maryland, Out for Justice Incorporated, Rank Choice Voting Maryland, Represent Women, Third Act Maryland, and Veterans for All Voters Maryland. The letter describes why we believe the city is ready for RCV, addressing election equipment capability, ballot design, implementation, and robust voter education. The city has seen many changes in its long history, and Annapolis has already played a very special role in the story of American democracy. So I hope the city will strengthen it by embracing ranked choice voting. And if everyone here who is supportive of RCV, could you please stand? Or raise your hand? On behalf of our coalition and supporters across the city of Annapolis, we urge the mayor and council to adopt ordinance O 3525. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Amy, you're up next.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Amy Cruz. I'm Ward Eight President. Address is 924 Wells Avenue. I am here in my personal capacity tonight, but as some of you know, I have spent a number of years, a couple of decades, actually, working on voting rights at the ACLU of Maryland, in particular, running our election protection campaign for 20 years. But today, I'm here in my personal capacity as a resident of Annapolis, and I'm here in strong support of ranked choice voting. I have to say that when I heard that Annapolis was considering ranked choice voting, I was super excited. This is something that I have wanted for Maryland, for Annapolis, since, for 25 years. Since there was a little Rob Savage, and a little Rob Tufts, and a little Amy Cruz running around Annapolis, thinking that they could like get involved in local politics at the age of 22 years old. We were talking about ranked choice voting, and we're talking about how we can reform voting so that more voices can be included, and that we could get more people excited and involved in local government. And I know how many of you have tried really hard to make the local government more inclusive and engaging, and to have more people in, in positions of the city council, as well as boards and commissions. And I think that this ranked choice voting absolutely supports those goals, and even more importantly, especially these days, the goals of preserving our democracy. So there's three main reasons that I support RCV, and I'm so excited about it. And the first is that RCV lets people vote for their favorite candidate without fear that voting their heart will somehow backfire. I prefer a system that allows everyone to vote for the person that they really want. That should not sound crazy, but that is the situation that we have. That should not sound crazy, but that is the situation that we have. I have a strong, I have really strong political opinions, but I want to see more diversity of ideas in our local elections. My first couple of elections, there were a lot of enthusiasm about third-party candidates. This is when I was first starting to vote at a young age. But there was also a lot of pressure and shaming around the idea of voting your conscience and picking the candidate that you really wanted. And as a young voter, that was a big political turnoff, and I still am a little bit mad about it. So ranked choice voting eliminates this whole spoiler effects, effect. It allows voters to pick their favorite candidate, and then their second favorite. And as other people said, you don't have to vote for more than one if you don't want to, you can vote for whoever, and you don't have to vote for whoever. But without fear of voting, that voting your heart will somehow backfire, but as I already said. The second reason, and I'm very passionate about this, is that it protects against vote splitting. And the reason I care about this is because communities of color, especially here, black voters, don't lose representation when support is divided among multiple candidates. So this prevents dilution of races when you have, let's say, you have two black candidates and a white candidate, you don't have to worry about the, the black vote getting split. I'll wrap it up real quick. So the third reason is that it allows for true voter choice, which I already have repeated a bunch of times, of being able to actually vote for who you want to vote for. And I'll just conclude by again repeating that I'm very deeply committed to racial equity and an inclusive local government that is responsive to everyone in the city, especially those who are not in the room today. And I really think that this can help get more people in the room, and I'm asking you to vote for RCV for greater equity and democracy right here in Annapolis. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward and speak on O 3525? Awesome.
I'm Abby Root, representing the League of Women Voters of Anarundel County. Our state league is at 121 Cathedral Street. The League of Women Voters supports ranked choice voting because we believe it is important that election systems produce representation that reflects community sentiment, help increase voter participation by encouraging a broader range of candidates and more civil campaigns, and are feasible to implement. We also prefer election systems that are easy for the voter to understand, both in terms of how to vote and how their vote is counted. Help ensure minority views and interests have some influence in selecting elected officials. Help raise the level of political campaigns by encouraging a focus on the issues and discouraging negative campaigning. Maximize the power of each voter's vote, voter's vote, and help promote more openness and responsiveness between candidates and constituents. We believe if the majority of votes is required to win an election, ranked choice voting is preferred method of determining such a majority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kurt Sivenson. I live in Arnold. I just want you all to know that the eyes of many Anarundel County residents are upon you. As a municipality in Maryland, you are uniquely positioned to play a key leadership role in this important election reform movement. Your choice to move forward with and to showcase the success of ranked choice voting is an important first step for Anarundel County as a whole. Your success will help Anarundel County to join with other counties to obtain the same authority you have to choose their election systems. I know at least one candidate for county executive who already strongly supports ranked choice voting. I know some of you may be concerned about the cost of implementation. Change does not come without cost, but you need not be alone. Others have made this choice before you, others will be making this change alongside you, and you can partner with leaders in county government to ensure the path toward this future is efficiently and cost-effectively paved. It's in the county's interest to see you succeed. God bless and Godspeed.
Did we miss anyone? Okay, thank you.
Evening, Mayor Buckley and Annapolis City Council. My name is Patrick McDermott. I am at 200 Bertina A. Nick Way, Annapolis, Maryland, 21401. It's in Ward Two. Today, I am speaking in support of ranked choice voting and O 3525. At its core, ranked choice voting is designed to elect the most popular candidate. Because a candidate must attract support from a majority of voters rather than just a plurality, which usually is less than 50%, candidates have to appeal to a broader set of voters. And in our current system, candidates cater their message to a subset of voters that often will carry them through the primary. Now, taking this into account, when I hear someone say that RSC, RCV is going to make it harder for them, or say their party, to win an election, what I'm really hearing is them admit that their platform that they intend to run on isn't really popular with a majority of voters. God forbid they face the consequences of having unpopular policies. I also want to be clear that RCV does not necessarily mean that the most moderate candidate will win. It means that the most popular candidate will win. Candidates with bold ideas can be very successful in RCV if the bold idea is popular. See Zaron Mamdani in New York. RCV creates space for independent and third-party candidates as well to run in the general election without spoiling the result. In Annapolis specifically, three of the last eight mayoral general election campaigns have been won with a plurality rather than a majority, because there were more than two candidates running. Fair Vote found that since 2004, only 6% of all elections that used RCV had a winner that was not in first place after the first round tabulations. In most cases, candidates that earn a plurality of first choices are also widely popular and win a majority of support. Now, let's examine those 6% of races where someone else ended up winning. Ultimately, those candidates were popular with a subset of voters, but had alienated a majority of voters to not rank them on their ballot. Great example of this was the 2022 Special House Race in Alaska. In the primary election, Sarah Palin earned a plurality of support with 27% of the vote. However, most Alaskans were turned off by her political style, extreme platform, and the fact that she had abandoned the governorship in Alaska a few years prior. After three rounds of tabulation, Mary Potola won the RCV general election with 40% of the vote in the first rounds and 51% in the final round. In this instance, Alaskans were able to express their preference among all the candidates and avoided electing a relatively unpopular candidate. And if you flash forward two years to 2024, and a different Republican, Nick Begich, won the congressional seat. So this shows that RCV does not help or hurt particular parties, but rather it helps popular candidates and hurts unpopular ones. And specifically, just mentioning myself as an unaffiliated voter, I would love the chance to not be constantly having to make that quote-unquote "strategic" vote when it comes to the general election, because I don't get a choice in choosing in the primary system that we have in Maryland. And then I have to usually choose the lesser of two evils when it comes to the general. I would love, as an unaffiliated voter, to not have to make that choice anymore. Generally, I want a system that rewards these broadly popular candidates. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Philatetto, 1800 Poplar Avenue, Ward Three. I'm here to speak in support of the ranked choice voting or RCV bill being introduced. As I said when I was here last time, US citizens have long been feeling disenfranchised by the entrenched two-party system, as others have said. Voter sentiment shows the state of our election to be unsatisfactory. So we're obligated to ask, how can we improve our elections and democratic processes so candidates that are ultimately elected are more closely aligned with the visions, views, and values of voters? RCV has been shown to be that step towards a better democratic process, with many elections around the country having used RCV in primary and general election. That being said, RCV may be new to you and many Annapolis residents, especially in these times, it can cause anxiety to tweak our electoral system. So I'd like to help persuade any nervousness, especially from our marginalized communities. I know there's concern about how this will affect black candidates by long-term black Annapolis residents. Here's some of the data on elections that used RCV. National studies show a higher percentage of people of color hold city council seats in ranked choice voting cities. 2012 case study in the Bay Area found RCV cities have a higher percentage of women and women of color on their city councils. Data from jurisdictions using RCV confirms higher-than-average numbers of people of color run for office and are elected after RCV is implemented. Candidates of color benefit from the RCV counting process, seeing their vote share increase between first and final rounds. Don't worry, right friends, this has long, this has shown promise for white candidates as well. When considering elections for one seat, RCV races who are active, candidates who are active past the first round of vote counting, white candidates increased their vote share between their first and final rounds by 12%. Candidates of other racial and ethnic backgrounds see increases, led by black candidates, with a 15% increase. Candidates of colors pay no penalty when they run against other candidates of the same race, their race, or ethnicity. When a candidate of color is eliminated, ballots are more likely to transfer to other candidates of the same race or ethnicity. Some other stats. The median black candidate earns 6% more votes than expected when other black candidates were eliminated, suggesting a favorable transfer of support within their own community. The median Hispanic or Latino candidate earns 12% more transfer ballots than expected. The median Asian-American or Pacific Islander candidate earned 33% more transfer ballots than expected, again indicating a positive in-group flow of support. Now let's talk about how women have fared in RCV elections. National studies show that a higher percentage of women hold city council seats in ranked RCV cities. According to Represent Women's Research in 2024, women made up only 33% of city council seats in the 100 largest cities. But in RCV cities, women make up 52% of seats on city council seats. Women also make up a larger percentage of mayors in RCV cities. In 2021, history was made when 31 women were elected to the New York City Council, the first time ever the council would have a women majority. Of those women, 25 were women of color. 26 of those women won ranked choice election primaries. I hope that this information was helpful. I will email it to you all. There's a lot of information on how RCV has affected elections for the better. I only get so much time, as we just heard, so I'll leave it up to others to continue to share more information. Then, to the day, RCV is shown to be a tested compromise to elect candidates that are more broadly reflective of the will and aims of all voters, and better level the playing field for marginalized candidates, improving our democratic process, and with several other positive ancillary effects on our elections. I urge you to vote in support of this legislation and help restore faith and enthusiasm for our elections. If you have any questions, I'm easy to find. Thank you.
Could it be honest, like to come forward and speak?
So RCV is losing all over the country, and these guys know it. So we're getting to be a tested laboratory to try to claw their way back in favor, I guess here in Anarundel County. RCV is a direct assault on one person, one vote, forcing voters to choose anyone but their first choice is disenfranchising voters. Choosing the candidate that has the priorities and values that align with our own is our right. The second, and third, and fourth choice may not have any priorities or values that reflect ours. Ranked choice voting is flat-out undemocratic. It will create the tyranny of the mediocre. Anyone with innovative ideas will be denied public office in favor of banal establishment choices. This approach is a democracy killer. Here's some reality. With ranked choice voting, not all votes count. In Maine, the second congressional district in the 2018 Democratic primary, although 126,000 votes were cast, only 117,000 votes were counted. This means that approximately 7% of the voters, nearly 9,000 people, had their voices silenced by ballot exhaustion. In San Francisco, Board of Supervisors general election, after 20 rounds of tabulation, 53% of the ballots had been exhausted, and only 8,200 ballots contributed toward the final results. Reality. More ballots were thrown out than were counted. Having someone's vote systematically discarded under RCSV is directly disenfranchising individual voters. It's completely unacceptable. One person, one vote. Not one person, one vote, maybe. RCS, RCV literally depersons a registered voter. In the last few months, the Michigan House passed a bill banning RCV. Denver just rejected RCV. Somebody mentioned Utah. Park City, Utah, just rejected RCV. Iowa in June became the 17th state to ban RCV. Also, Ohio is thinking about banning RCV. And it's coming back in Alaska to ban RCV. RCV in many states and many cities is one of the biggest buyer's remorse moments that an electorate has, or a city council, or a county, or a state. I urge this city council not to get involved in this experiment and reject this ordinance. Vote no. If you want to open up this voting process to more people, have nonpartisan, open primaries. I think what Ron Gunsberg said earlier was the correct way to pursue this. This is an experiment that will go very badly, and the whole city will end up in buyer's remorse, and will be like these other 17 states, or some of these other cities that have had to reverse course and reject RCV. Thank you.
Did we miss anyone? Hold on, Pendell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make one comment concerning one component of this, which is the incivility part that I heard. And I want to say this in front of Mr. O'Shea, as well as Mr. Lippman. We have been extraordinarily civil. Wasn't by design, we didn't discuss it, but it's the quality of the candidates that make sure that the process and the campaigns are civil. Thank you.
All right, I declare the public hearing on O 3525 closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is O 3625, lease of city property, 21. Do we do that before?
Nope.
Yeah, okay. 2131, 2031 to 2036 Spring Boat Shows.
Okay, one person signed up to speak. Thank you, everybody. John Stefanik, again, please come forward if you're still here. If not, you want to come forward and speak on it, or, you know, we all support you. It's in the, we got you. Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is legislative action, first readers, beginning with ordinance O 3725, City Capital Facilities Charges Payment Plan.
Can I get a motion on O 3725? So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. I'd like to refer O 3725 to Economic Matters Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda for first reader is O 3825, accession to the city's prohibition on doors or gates opening over sidewalks.
Can I get a motion on O 3825?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. I'll refer O 3825 to Environmental Matters Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is Resolutions for First Reader, R 3325, Speed Monitoring System Fines.
Can I get a motion on O R 3325?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. Let's refer R 3325 to the Finance Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R 3425, Market Space Interest Charge Waiver.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. On first reader, Ron Pendell Charles.
Just one comment, I guess maybe for public consumption. Resolutions and ordinances, it has been an issue that came up about first readers. And I think, I just want to say, for me, first readers are extremely important. It vets things through the standing committees. We don't have staff, but I think sometimes out of that come other issues and other solutions that we have. So just want to make that kind of commentary to the public. Sometimes it gets a bit confusing. Sometimes it gets a bit confusing.
Yep. Have to get it on the floor to get to the public, right?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry, Alderman Gay. I'll run through them pretty fast. Yeah, yeah. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. R 3425 goes to the Finance Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R 3525, 181 Prince George Street Sidewalk Easement.
Can I get a motion on R 3525? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is Resolution R 3625, Fees for Cl...
Sorry, Ms. City Manager?
I just wanted to check which... where that got referred to.
I don't have it referred anywhere.
Resolution.
Yeah, R 35.
The resolution.
Okay. We had just referred some of the other resolutions to committee, so I just wanted to see.
Nowhere. Not in my comments, anyway. Mr. City Attorney, next, please.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R 3525, 181 Prince George Street Sidewalk Easement.
Okay. Can I get a motion for that, please? So moved. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is R 3625, Fees for Clearing Snow and Ice from City Sidewalk.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We'll refer R 3625 to the Finance Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R 3825, Reassigning Fiscal Year 2025 and Fiscal Year 2026 Community Grants.
Okay. Can I get a motion on R 3825?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R 3925, Itinerant Merchant Sales in the Historic District 4 Flea Market.
Is there a motion to adopt R 3925 on first reader?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Let's refer R 3925 to the Finance Committee. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R 4025, Equitable Public Water Access Plan.
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We're going to refer that to Environmental Matters Committee. Alderman Savage? Is it... Was that it?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm... I was also going to bring it to the Severn River Commission.
Right. Well, I think it's commendable work that's been done on that. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is R 4125, 2025 Gold Bowling Military Bowl Parade and Football Game.
We love having all those people in town for this, spending money.
So moved.
Is there a motion? Thank you. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Let's refer that to the Finance Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes. Last item on first reader is C A 225, City Council Pay and Benefits Deadline.
So moved. Second.
Right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? We'll refer C A 225 to Rules and City Government Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The second readers, beginning with ordinance O 1225, Prioritizing Affordable Spending Through Expansion of Financial Advisory Commission Duties.
Got a motion to withdraw this? Alderman Arnett?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move to withdraw this. I think that the...
Second.
Desire for spend affordability is a good idea. But in discussions with the Finance Director, City Manager, and Chair of the Finance Committee, I think there's a better way to proceed, and we're working on that.
Okay, thank you. So we've got a motion to withdraw. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is O 3125 for second reader, Issuance of General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Is there a motion to adopt O 3125 on second reader?
Moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt O 3125 on third reader?
So moved. Second.
And Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor Buckley?
Aye.
Alderman O'Neil?
Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Chandler Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Gay? Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
No.
Alderman?
Let's see that.
Aye.
Give one... Give one last one.